Just, Fernando is...
Yeah, I don't know, outside.
If I can call the meeting to order and if I can, Shona, I'm just wondering, I know that Councilor Fernando is here, but he might be just outside. Would that be possible? Thank you, just if we know he's in the building, just a courtesy to say it's seven o'clock now. So if I can call the meeting to order and have council please move approval of the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Bain and I, Councilor Bronsley. If I could, just add as delegations, the RCMP under number four, as they were expected, and it just was noted that it hadn't been noted on the agenda. And on seven B, if seven B can become seven A, and seven A becomes seven B, as suggested, by Ms. Coates. And are there any other changes, additions, deletions? Okay, there being none. Call question on the motion, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. If we can move along then, to public participation, and if I can ask anybody, I, Councilor Bain, if you could maybe just pass up, thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Thank you. If we can have Oliver Ganski. Thank you, Mr. Ganski, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to present two items to council on behalf of residents. One is a petition, and I'd like the minister to reflect that these are being handed in. The petition has 26 signatories, and I'll read out the heading of it. "We, the undersigned residents of Lyons Bay hereby request that council uphold our wishes as outlined in the current official community plan by law 420 of 2010, specifically with reference to the protection and preservation of the crown land and green zones as an undeveloped green buffer zone around the community, specifically as follows," and that's a quote from the OCP that follows the section 510, watershed environment protection. The land use map defines areas of environmental protection. These include crown lands on upper slopes, the watershed, the water course, and the shoreline. These lands should be maintained in their natural form to protect village safety and manage with a high and good stewardship. In addition to that petition, attached is a letter to, a letter from Fever Rock Engineering Services to Mr. Chuck Partridge that addresses erosion issues along Mountain Drive, between the addresses, I believe, of 340 and 390 Mountain Drive, and some of the remedial work that they recommend. And I think it illustrates issues of slope stability already present, at least on the Cut Bank, where that slope has been affected by human intervention, I mean, basically cutting a road through. Also wanted to point out that I've noticed today that a number of the holders that used to be present along Mountain Drive had been removed by what looked like village equipment, which seemed an interesting item relative to this. It seems to follow the recommendations of this, of this letter. So, that is it. May I pass this to council?
Absolutely.
And have the minutes reflected that this is being handed in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ganski. And just on that note, certainly I don't see council having any coordinated knowledge of your presentation this evening, but I thank you for it. So in, in reference to anything that is or isn't on Mountain, but, but really appreciate you coming forward with this, most appreciated. If I can, then go to Carol Conlon. Ms. Conlon, welcome.
Thank you. The minutes of the last council meeting, September 16th, in your council package for approval this evening, have the following statements under my name, and comments, questions, section 13, page 10 of 499. Ms. Conlon thanked interim CAO McGrath for reminding council of the need to abide by village bylaws, and expressed disappointment towards the member of council who passed the without prejudice motion regarding the cutting of trees on aisle B placed by Dr. Brogdon. The audio and the video clearly showed that what I said was, I thanked interim McGrath for reminding council that they should enforce the village bylaws, and that I wanted to tell three council members, it was shameful, they did not follow that advice, and forgave BCS Strata 815, owned by Mayor Brogdon and her husband, for aisle view tree cutting without a permit. I ask that the minutes of September 16th be corrected. If the minutes are not corrected, then I ask that this public participation piece be reprinted in full.
I'll try to clarify that. Yeah. If I can just clarify a point that's being made, is I do not own that commercial complex. There is one part of it that I am a co-owner of, just for, just for clarity, and that...
You own no part of BCS 815?
Pardon me?
You own no part of BCS 815?
Yes, I do. I thought you said that I own it. I own a part of it.
BCS 815?
A part, a part, a part, I own the, I'm a co-owner of the...
Do you understand that is our main...
Just, just for clarity. Anyway, if I may, thank you very much, Ms. Conlon. If I may go on to Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Oh.
Uh-oh. What happened?
Thank you very much.
Can I get a reset?
Sergeant Pride, yes you can. And thank you very much, Inspector Cross. They were very fast.
Keep standing, Jeff.
Stay standing. Thank you very much, to Sergeant Pride and to Inspector Cross.
This is in regard to the community center renovation, which has been brought before council on several other occasions. According to the reports submitted by the village, it states on February 5th, 2014, council in an in-camera meeting considered the project scope letter and the next phase of the project construction, and council... Don't have my glasses on. That council would not undertake with any further construction unless both the federal and provincial grants were amended on February 5th. And that was in the report. The provincial grant has not been amended.
Do you want to address that?
Yet. Mr. Consultant, according to the documentation, gave approval to Mr. Lomson to go ahead with further construction, other than the rules that was being done.
Take it under advisement.
So, my question is, what is council doing, several questions, to account or to comply with the provincial grant to supply 726 additional square feet approximately, construction of, to meet that obligation of the grant? And why did council allow for the continuation of the project without receiving the, without amending the provincial grant? And why wasn't Mr. Consultant advised? Or why didn't Mr. Consultant advise for...
Mr. Stone, just to clarify, if you could, it's Mr. McGrath who I think that you're referring to.
Correct.
Thank you. If I can, I've just been advised to just take those questions under advisement. I just want to ask if there's anything that, further that council wishes to add?
Counselor McLaughlin? Any of these questions have been asked and answered several times?
They've not been answered, they've been responded to, but never answered. I still don't have an answer for where we're going to come up with 726 additional square feet for the community center. And the bylaw, the procedure bylaw says that council will answer the questions. And if you don't have an answer at this time, I'm pretty surprised and shocked if you don't know why you went ahead and we're doing it.
I think we should say that we're working with the province on that.
Whatever you want.
Yeah. Pardon me?
If you want to say that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's accurate.
Yeah.
But we're working, we've continued to work with the province, Mr. Stone. But I think that that goes to Counselor McLaughlin's comments, that we've continued to say that. So, but I thank you for your time.
There's no official proposal made by the, by the village, to the province, for, for a change in, in the scope of the, of the grant terms?
I, I really am confident in Mr. McGrath who working continuously with the province.
So, Mr. McGrath does not know what we're doing as a village to provide for the 726 square feet of additional space, right now, two weeks before the, the project is supposed to be completed?
Mr. Stone, this has, yeah, this has, this has come up a number of times, and council has confidence in us moving ahead. Is that fair to say, Mr. McGrath?
Well, that's your decision, whether you've got confidence to move ahead. I do.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. If I can, then...
I'm waiting for an answer for where we're going to supply some...
If I can, if I may, just under the rules of order...
It's not, it wasn't in the report?
Mr. Stone, I didn't read out the rules of order for the public participation tonight, but it, it does require that it is just two minutes, and that we maintain decorum and respectful interaction, so we do have that. And as, as it says, under the public participation, I'll just read it through, everybody can be a pride.
I'll tell you, in the, in the provincial, in the bylaw, procedure bylaw also says council will answer the questions, not avoid them, which they continue to be doing.
We're not, we're not avoiding them. Mr. Stone, I'm going to ask you to be seated. Mr. Stone, please be seated, or else I'll read this out, and I don't want to implement the actions. Thank you so much. If we can, then go to Louis Peterson. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Dr. Peterson.
Madam President, I sometimes get up quite early in the morning, go for a walk around Lyons Bay. Sometimes six o'clock, sometimes half past five in the morning. And this is as the sun is just beginning to get up. I walk along the streets, amongst the houses and the homes, and I see kiddie bikes in the, in the ditches, I see the trees, I see the texture of the forest changing as I walk around. I see the mist hanging over Andale Island, and I still think that Lyons Bay, after four to six years here, it's a very special place. It is a truly special place. And there's so much to be said about it that we need to preserve.
Thank you. Okay, if we can, move along, and if I can introduce to everyone, it's an honor to have Inspector Neil Cross and Sergeant Wayne Pride. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, I just want to ask a question.
I'm sorry. If, if we can just have the RCMP come forward, and Ellen, if there's something that we'd, we'd ask, I'm just going to have you sit down right now. I didn't have your name down, but I'll ask you to speak after. Is that fine? Thanks very much. Sorry that your name hadn't been put down here, but I think that we should just go ahead with the RCMP. We're in the middle of an introduction here, and with all due respect, first of all, I'd like to welcome you both here to Lyons Bay, and I caught them just almost entering our community center as I was driving by. So, welcome, and I had the honor of last week attending an RCMP meeting with Inspector Neil Cross, and Sergeant Wayne Pride has taken the time to join us as well tonight, and to present to us as they do from time to time, but on the report and on this meeting as well. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you very much. We wish you luck, sir. As was mentioned, we're here for the semi-annual crime stats, and just, just in reference to that meeting last week, that was held, let's say, a mayor's consult forum that happens with our lower mainland district commander, as well as former mayor's from the Orange Land District area. So, very well attended, and we talked about a number, number of various effectiveness reviews of our officers deploying when the crimes happening, as opposed to the shifting of the day. So, peak officer, peak times, working here locally here for many years. We talked about national mission underway, such as the carb lines that are being issued to the officers, and that more than is happening. We talked about in-car camera systems that they're looking at, as well as body more cameras, integrated teams we spoke on, and mental health issues of the nurse officers attending the mental health post. It was, it was quite a happy day, but it was very valuable.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I found the date myself very meaningful, and I'll just, again, thank you both for attending this evening.
Thanks. Sergeant Pride is our cell cell, he looks after the operations. Brian Cummings works as a team at Squamish and covering off this area. Unfortunately, Brian wasn't able to attend tonight, because he's working on his business for present.
Thank you.
So, just getting to the violent crime, I'll just speak to him, obviously we don't have a PowerPoint here available tonight, so we need to do that, but I'll go through it, and then I'll send you the copy of this out, so make sure you have your copy of it. Violent crime from January till the end of June, is, is all this information till the end of June as we come up. Last year, we had one instance of violent crime, and this year, we had three instances. So, there has been a bit of an increase. Breakdown in the area, a lot of it, one robbery instance, and two instances of domestic violence. Domestic violence has been increasing across the province over the last couple of years, and we've seen that spike over the whole province, not just in this corridor. Right now, in the corridor, we've had an increase. Squamish and the Surry, and, you know, part of it is they gave a message out, and hopefully some of it is maybe more people reporting, us getting aggressive early on, before it gets, I'm sure it's... But I know Sergeant Pride is involved in three-year meetings with domestic violence groups, and we're here as a social...
Yeah, it's, overall, the stats that we've seen, seem to go up. Often we're not, we've been heard, consistent here in Squamish. One, one statistic is too much. But we have regular power meetings up there, and we work with mental health groups, family agencies, we regularly have, we have, heard as I can. So, higher this meeting group, there's files where we have bomb domestic situations ongoing. It's a group of social workers, police, and some kind of care group, groups that have to fire, that have to go, and specifically, since we've got a game plan concerning situations we've damaged, where we see there even some types of domestic violence, and so there's a specialized team to bring together, there's ones that we see different patterns repeating themselves. So, we'll never stop them, but we're working with, it's not just us that answer the calls that we're doing.
It's an education piece to give, we're out to make sure you get, you know, those pieces were in place early on, so if there's any instances of nurse, that stops their treatment as a day, and move on.
Excellent.
That's what we're working on, that. Assaults, general assaults, went from one last year to two this year, and that's kind of a synopsis of property crime, by crime. Property crime, there has been an increase, which probably runs around the community, from seven last year, for six months, to twenty-four instances this year. A lot of it is, we've probably seen mailboxes involved, we've seen a spike on the corridor in reverse mailboxes. Part of it, I think, is now marijuana being sent through mailboxes, as well as theft of identification, that kind of thing. So, we're seeing instances of gun boxes being brought back to. And of Canada, of course, there's work by getting secure boxes, which ones are very contained, but we're kind of jumping back. Auto theft, we've had two of them, theft on vehicles, five, so on that, make sure to remind residents, lock their vehicles up, and it's a, it's a safe community, and it's easy to just jump on your vehicle, leave the house, make sure you're locking your doors of vehicles, the houses and garages, where someone's passing through. It doesn't take much for a property grab to, like, if somebody's got three or four vehicles, and all of a sudden, it's like, two, three, four, things like that. There's no thefts over $5,000. There were seven instances of theft under $5,000. Mischievous property, we're at $5,000, zero. Mischievous property, under $5,000, there were seven instances. So, I think, we need to use a file on a weekly basis, and I think the trend is some battles, and some tagging.
Yes.
So, are people taking scraping, tagging things, and we're part of two of those, some property crimes.
No, just wanted to go over just...
I think it's covered, yes.
Just to, I'm sorry, I just add to what Inspector said here. The vehicle thing, I see that all over the community. We have rashers in that community here. Simply choose the date, the mailboxes were targeted a couple of times, and there's a couple of meetings where a couple of cars were damaged, broken into, and that's the spike. It looks ridiculous, proceeded, like, this is where they had probably some traffic vendors that came through. Time and again, even areas that we have, a lot of the theft on vehicles, we keep getting reports of people at their computer, and gift bags, or climbing here, their passports and stuff. Just really, please reiterate, don't, don't leave any bait on the hook for people to come here and think it's quiet. Likes turn out at nine, maybe get these cars, and do what else, lock your cars up, take everything others. We just recently arrested a vendor in Squamish, two weeks ago, thirty-five-year-old gentleman that we've been dealing with twelve years. He was arrested based on investigation of breaking a car in downtown Squamish. And when our officer arrested him, he's had possession of a lot of mail, ID, stolen property, and investigations ongoing. He was one of our guys that was sparking a lot of mailboxes, and the car is sort of here. So, we've noticed some drastic reduction in those type crimes. Right now, unless somebody cooks it, they're followed by one of our investigators, he's still sixty-two or five, so I can't say for sure if there's any associated to this committee. But the state's around the bit, and it's probably a few days in January, so hopefully that's a good...
Wow, congratulations.
And it only takes one do of it, to just do that.
Yeah.
And I saw the stack of credit cards and ID, it was about that thick, that the officer recovered, various kinds of information, ID, and, I mean, they can look down with that stuff, two of them, vendors, can do a lot of pushing our guys, and very diligent in targeting people, a small portion of responsible, non-accident crimes, and have done a very good job. Overall, in the quarter, property crime is down significantly, because the, the, the spike here, it's down as we're hitting the broken cars. I have full anticipation that it has been a long now for just a year, or back for the next four to five years, as to what we have in common. Bicycle theft, we've had one last year, from January, jumped to June, and one this year, it was a consistent system. Other prob, other crime in general, causes of service, zero, toxicating public, we had two instances, with toxicating public. One fraud. On to traffic safety, we've had eleven collisions total within this area, including Highway 99. And all eleven were on 99. In comparison, last year, it was seventeen collisions, so it's down.
It's down.
And motor vehicle instances, fatal collisions, happy to report, we've had zero within this quarter, crazy recording period. Motor vehicle incidents, damage over $1,000, it was six. Injuries, it was three, compared to seven last year, and impaired, it was three. In comparison, last year, it was two. workload, priority one calls, that's the call, emergency kind of calls that we have to attend to. We've had twenty-one within this recording period, and last year, we had sixteen within the same timeframe. Just to touch on our annual performance planning issues that we've consulted with, with yourselves, and others in the corridor on, the first one is substance abuse, the use, the use of drugs, whether it be youth or otherwise. Youth engagement, prevent youth from being involved in crime, or being victims of crime. So, our officers are still working with the DARE program, engaging with the kids, and on bikes where it can be. Mischievous, reduce vandalism of property crime. And the fourth one is traffic-related incidents, just looking towards, returning towards safer roads, and that's doing road checks, traffic checks. Remind the public that electronic devices shouldn't be used when driving, and it's where you should be using. It's now the second-leading cause of fatal accidents up there, so it's very prevalent, and there's more education that's going to be required in that regard.
Excellent. Let me just open it up. Oh, go ahead.
That's the information I have, so if you have any...
If I can, just open it up to council members to make any comment. Yes, Counselor Bain?
Have you seen any increase in incidents with the speed limit going up, or have you had no effect?
No, doesn't yet. We'll see what happens when the snow flies. I mentioned, I'm driving back up the corridor just a couple of days ago, and again, it's, it's nice now, but we'll see what happens. No matter what the speed limit is, people should be driving to low conditions, not to the speed sign. And once that hits, with, you know, whether they're going to have proper tires or not, coming up through those rental vehicles, maybe not having more tires stacked to mind with speed, we'll see what happens. Hopefully, they, they drive to the conditions, and hopefully gets to where they need to save them, but we'll see.
Okay. Interim CAO, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you. I appreciate your, the presentation, and it's interesting to watch the stats. A question on, on how you categorize. I know that I've had a chance to call the RCMP a couple of times over the past year, and when I have seen and witnessed, or our staff have witnessed, a very abusive citizen, what would that be categorized at? Is that considered to be a priority one call, or how, or is that just categorized as an open case, or?
Priority one would be an emergency kind of call, so if there was an assault in progress, or some instances where there was violence towards a person, breaking in, it could be, if somebody's breaking into your home, but it's just a disagreement where there's, there's nobody hitting each other, then we're going to get there as soon as we can, it wouldn't be a priority response, or to emergency lights and sirens. There again, we don't want the public, or ourselves, at risk for, if it's not too bad known.
Okay, so the case is open, okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, sorry, so abusive, like, a beating like this, I get aggressive, assertive with you, that kind of thing, or calling your names in a threatening manner?
In, in, out in the streets, you know, we're, we're very concerned about some, you know, aggressive citizens, and there has been occasions, I think twice, when I've called the RCMP about, you know, our, our workers are feeling very concerned about the aggressiveness of...
Fair physical assault?
Yes.
Okay, that would be pretty important. If they articulate that, that someone's acting irrational, if they know the person they're not, making mental health issues, or other issues.
Great.
And there again, we're all just out there trying to do the best that we can, and we're not to be abused, so they should, if it happens, they definitely call, and I'll help them, obviously prevent it from occurring any further.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. If I can just go to the table first, and then maybe we can take a couple of questions from the gallery, that would be helpful. Any further questions from council? Okay. Mr. Stone? And if it can just be brief, because I'll just see if there's any others, and then we'll, we'll continue with the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I have some questions. What's your, your response time to a priority call, and what's your response time approximately for non-priority calls? And then I have one more question after that.
Well, the service standard within a, within an area where we have officers would be quicker than, say, if we're not booked in this area. So, it would depend, if we have an emergency call within Lyons Bay, a priority call, even if it's not a general duty officer, if, say, we have a traffic services officer on the highway, they would respond initially, to deal with it as soon as possible, then our general duty officers, the patrol units that would back up and take that file, would then come and take over. So, it's hard to say if you're going to be in the area, worst case area, if they're coming from Squamish, would be emergency, it would be fifteen minutes.
Yeah, depending on the location, Squamish or close.
It could be fifteen minutes if they're coming from Squamish, or emergency lights and sirens. But there again, it depends on...
Road conditions.
Vehicles, it's all that, so it depends on that.
And we have a, so we do have excellent relationship with West Bay. We're always working with them, if there's something that's been about the community, we're, we're, and have started responding to assist us on, in the past seventeen, eighteen or nine years.
So, should we, we should be called West Bay?
Oh, no, 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 sorry, I'm just saying that if there's a, a big emergency, and the sky is falling, we do have the resource call, and our response time is usually quite good.
Well, sometimes we do, if there's a collision, or we can't pick the certain area, sometimes they'll get called to the accident, they'll get there, and then relay it to us, actually in your area, they'll contain it till we get there, and then we'll take control, see if it's in our area.
Sorry, I didn't even say call West Bay. Love it to death, but if it's a very serious 911, we can, oh, I don't see that, so it has to be appropriate, but we, we...
And so, not priority, not priority? Not priority, it depends, I mean, depending on the reality, it could be, depending on what, what the call is, and what other call resources are.
And my other question is, when will the RCMP resume regular patrol in our neighborhoods? We still have it? We haven't seen it in quite a number of years. When will the RCMP resume patrol in our neighborhoods?
Sergeant Cryer was the patrol units. I know there used to be a sort of community police office thing.
That's correct.
I'm not sure where that went by the wayside, if it was utilized. So his task was making sure that whatever officers we had available on each shift, that's the area, and then on priority calls. So maybe if you're...
Yeah, I give it controls. Yeah, no, I think we discussed this, it's in the Detroit Creek, Britannia Beach, of course, we pump up patrols if we have a rash of different vehicles or post office things. But it is important to us, because you're part of a community. Can you get the cars down here when we can? Unfortunately, it is a resource-based thing. If we have a slow night, and it reminds us that we want someone down here, or if we have members going down to Corvina or West Vancouver, we have to do extra patrols in the area. But fortunately for you folks, unfortunately for others, we have higher calls per service in different parts of the community. So there's more police cars out there because there's more crime in certain areas. All I can say is that, reemphasize with our members, that downtime, if they can try to move down this way, I wouldn't be able to give a schedule. That's a frustration for the folks as well. But I can remind members and all the watching teams, if they have the resources, if things are slow, don't forget how many times they apply the covers, touch base.
Thank you. One more quick question. We have a new beach in the summer in Quebec.
A new beach?
A nude.
Is that new?
For over thirty years. We're just wondering, in the stealth, for over thirty years. Will the RCMP respond to do something to, if those issues go away? Well, being enclosed in a public area is an issue.
Well, we have to, has this been accepted in formal nude beach? I worked at UBC for a member here. Is there official provincial designation?
Perhaps I can, I can address that a little bit. The beach is operating in a manner that we are not receiving complaints. We are receiving some dog complaints down there. To my, this is to my knowledge. Certainly, I'd ask anybody with anybody else. But several years ago, there were a lot of complaints, and Judy Williams, you're probably familiar with, is the head of the Rec Beach Society, and she was a former, former, former Lions Bay resident. And I called Judy because the, there was support for this beach from Rec Beach, and I said, you know, this beach doesn't have a charter, it's not guided by a charter, and the activities that are occurring down there would not be upheld on Rec Beach, according to the Rec Beach Charter. And she was very receptive and responsive about that. And since that time, and that's some time ago, there, that, those particular issues, that all the things that are not supported in their charter, using your imagination, they're not occurring. And they were publicly occurring, they're not occurring. So then it went into parking, and that got dealt with under the two thousand and five, two thousand and eight administration here, council here. And so the residual piece isn't to do with the nude beach, that where we're getting concern, calls of concerns around dogs, for example. It's not, it's not emanating from that area. Parking is an ongoing issue there. We worked with highways to not use beach on any of the signage. We've changed the road, so it's Brunswick, and that's the nomenclature we use with purpose. We do not use Brunswick Beach. And so that was worked out with highways, it was worked out with our community. So in previous years, we have had occasion to call on the RCMP, and even before we'd restructured with Brunswick as a community, making us one community, during my time as mayor, when we were two communities, we did nonetheless ask the RCMP to come in and help us with some of those prevailing issues at that time.
So if we did get some type of call, we would look at it based on priority, and then we would, as we're attempting. Just in regards to the warrant, we have a shortage of...
I was going to ask.
We always have enough to keep us company. So our crime stats, criminal code case per member is actually what, twenty-five percent higher in Squamish area.
Exactly.
So very steady, so depending on the call.
Yes, Mr. McGrath?
There are two things. One is that when you last presented, there's the question that was posed, are they within the village boundaries, or within which area are some of the statistics that you're capturing? Because some of them may not be right in within the municipal boundary. So I'm not quite sure of that, maybe we can check that out.
Yeah, this would have been within the boundary areas.
The municipal boundary?
Municipal boundary, it doesn't include any, like, closer along the shore.
Including the traffic?
Well, it's along ninety-nine. Pretty much all the traffic and the collisions were on ninety-nine within the area.
Okay. The second part is to Sergeant Cryer. When I was in West Vancouver, I was quite surprised to learn how many repeat offenders took the bus and came into West Vancouver and took the bus out of West Vancouver. One of the interesting things that we implemented in West Vancouver was employee watch, and we worked with the West Van Police Department. And when there was a repeat offender, or when there was a stolen vehicle in the area, or things like that, we worked out a program with our employees that they were brought up to date, they were, you know, and they were essentially the eyes for the West Vancouver Police Department for certain items. And so if there was a stolen vehicle, or there's identity of somebody that they think would come in, and the problem was that they knew who most of these people were, so just trying to identify where they were at specific times. So I'd be more than interested in perhaps to Mr. Stone's comments, that perhaps our employees could, you know, participate in that, and we can talk about the employee watch program.
Yeah, I was going to say the crime watcher, the business link, Catherine Hager's went up here to speak to you folks.
Yeah, yes.
Something like that. She has counterfeiters, prolific sense, we're looking for through the business link. She sends that kind of stuff over, and it's pretty current. Press releases, it's a copy, she's very involved, so I'm sure we can set up a meeting to look at this.
That's great.
Excellent.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna, if I can, just not, I'm going to, I'm just, I'm looking at our agenda, knowing that we have our consultant for land use and Mr. Renshaw. I just want to say thank you very much for being here tonight. You're welcome to stay, you're most welcome to leave. But we really appreciate the service that you are providing, and just the honesty that you've just provided to us about the reality of what the response time is, on the other hand, if it's really needed, and the integration between the RCMP and the West Vancouver Department or any other departments. And that's been a big, and it was discussed at arming, just a big shift in the last ten or fifteen years, that all of our communities really appreciate, those walls coming down. And I know you welcomed it, West Van welcomed it, all the integrated teams welcomed it. But it really does help us in those situations where we need the help more urgently. So thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Next couple days, how many? No. Tell me, I don't have a card. The general number, eight-nine-two-sixty-one-hundred? Sorry, is there anybody here too as well? Questions, concerns, tips, people you know, you want us to know? Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Are you off? You're all just, here, thanks very much for bringing all this up.
I'm sure.
Okay, if we can, then, and just two minutes, Ellen, would you like to join us? Thank you very much.
My question is concerning LUMP. When, if these particular processes go through rezoning, and you're going to do a lot of new development, how are you going to provide water, or are you going to be able to provide sufficient water? Or do you currently have a license of how much water you can take from the creeks? Is that correct?
Yes.
How would you get that expanded? Can you get that expanded to accommodate all of this that's going to be going on?
I think, I think that's a very good question. So looking at the two hundred and ninety-seven pages that have, we've received, that question is one of the important, it is, it's way up there, and I thank you for bringing it forward in this public forum. And what I'd like to maybe mention to you is that the water studies would, so if we needed to do a water study right now, we'd do a water study. But a water study in relation to the LUMP, looking at the fiscal prudence, that also has come up as a repetitive theme, and appropriately, is something that, when the community through, if it's the council's will, the next council's will, or its council's will, but for many more meetings. But then, when there's something articulated, then to look at what, a water analysis. But that is, I did ten pages of notes in microscopic writing, and then looked at the repeats, and water analysis is advisedly right up there, probably the top one. So thank you so much, Ellen, for coming, bringing that to us. If I can, I'm not going to take any questions from the gallery at this time. I'm going to go to our minutes and move adoption of minutes of September sixteenth. Could I have council please move and second? Council, thank you, Councilor Bain and Councilor Ronsley. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? I've got just a couple, just on the first page, public participation, three A, bullet one, last line, just the word "da" looks like, I thought it was redundant when I wrote my package. And I think that that is it, that is. Thank you, Councilor Ronsley.
On page nine, sorry, that's another point.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Not at all. If there's nothing, oh, I'm sorry.
It's a typo.
Yep.
Go for it.
Maybe pass it along when you find it. Is that okay? Could I call, question on the motion, all those in, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Ando? Oh, okay, just hold on, I'll go to you in a moment. Yes, Councilor Ronsley?
Sorry, I've got it.
Yes.
Page seven, under the action, up on top, should have been communicated to neighbors, instead of communication to neighbors.
Okay, and that's in the first paragraph?
Councilor Ando noted.
Communicated rather than communication.
Told you it was Meyer.
Councilor Ando?
So with Ms. Conlon's presentation in public participation, are we going to adopt the minutes, or are we going to have us relooked at? Maybe we should table the minutes? If they're not accurate?
Are you putting a tabling motion forward for review, or?
Yeah, I think that we should table the minutes until they can be reviewed to see whether or not what she actually said is reflected in the minutes, so that the minutes are accurate.
Okay. What I'm going to do is accept the tabling motion, and then there's no discussion on a tabling motion. If there's a seconder? Thank you, Councilor Bain. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously, or carried with, were you abstaining?
Oh, sorry.
No. Carried unanimously?
Silence was unanimous.
Okay, carried unanimously. If I might say, the intent of any minutes aren't answered. Answered is literally word by word by word, and we just couldn't do that for the whole meeting. And so it's certainly with that in mind, if that can be reviewed and got back next time. If we can, then move along to the new seven A, land...
Madam Mayor, I think we should, you know, not at this meeting, but certainly, I think, for the next council meeting.
Yeah.
We need to be very clear on exactly what you said.
Yes.
Either we include everything, which is verbatim, or you have to, you know, accept what the record is taking as a paraphrase of what's being said, because the intent of our, of the minutes in most organizations are not verbatim.
That's correct.
And so, you know, there may be some things that are not carried into the minutes that other people think are important, but that's really the job of council to determine that.
Okay. And I'm going to go to Councilor Ando in a moment, but just a point of clarification is that answered minutes are taken in parliament, and so you can go to the answered record and read the answered record, you can probably audio, of course, or even visual, perhaps. But I just want to iterate what Mr. McGrath has said, because this is coming up quite a bit. Did I exactly say this? So you want the intent to be correct. Councilor Ando?
That would be my point.
Yes, exactly.
What happens if the intent is...
The intent should be, yeah. And so we often do, in fact, as you know, correct the intent, because this word hasn't put it in the right way. So, yes, thank you, and thank you very much. If we can then move along, Mr. Karakis, could you join us up here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I'm just trying to get into...
To here, of course. No, that's great. Yes, could you please?
Is it here, or here?
Uh, where? No, 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 you can stay there, you can stay there. Would you like to, yeah, sure, you can sit at the table, I just don't want you to feel like you've got your back to the audience, that's the only thing.
I'll sit here if I see that way.
Or do you want to sit up here with moi?
Thank you, it's fine.
Is that good? You're welcome to sit.
Don't go away.
No, no.
I'll go in and do so.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Well, good evening, Mayor Conlon, and council, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present the land use master plan, and specifically to reflect on the process, the purpose and the context of the plan, and also some of the community and stakeholder issues that's occurred as part of the process. When we started out with this process, it was really focused on addressing challenges that are not just local, but regional as well. And like many municipalities in metro Vancouver, beyond the village of Lions Bay is facing significant challenges. These include changing demographics with accompanying declining enrollment in the elementary school, housing choice, affordability and accessibility, and including those related to aging population and the desire to age and price, aging infrastructure and increasing operating costs. And as those go to sort of larger and very challenging issues around climate change and community sustainability. Indeed, throughout this process, many of the village residents who participated confirm these challenges as being ones that are facing this community, and really emphasizing their desire to begin aggressively. And like Lions Bay and many other communities, border-thinking communities are discussing these challenges, and addressing them with progressive and innovative ways, in the context of a long-term vision for the community. The village's official community plan adopted in two thousand and nine recognized these challenges, along with the opportunities of a growing regional population, new exposure from the City Sky Highway. As a result, the OCP provides direction for exploring new housing types and sensitive redevelopment opportunities appropriate to the village, acknowledging that these are important leverage points for addressing a lot of the challenges that have been identified. So to address these challenges and acting on the sustainability and livability goals established in the OCP, the village initiated a community-based planning process at the beginning of this year, with a focus on land use and housing. The broad purpose of this process and the resulting land use master plan is to explore these new opportunities facing the village, and really to identify potential land use changes and new housing opportunities appropriate to the village. That is ones that are done in a manner that enhances, preserves and enhances the character, the identity, lifestyle, and overall sustainability of the community. That was a message we heard loud and clear throughout the process, the importance of the existing character and managing growth and change in a way that respects that existing character while looking forward to the future. The opportunities identified in the draft plan are really focused on supporting greater housing choice, encouraging walking and transit use, enhancing community amenities, supporting efficient and sustainable provision of infrastructure, and preserving valued natural open spaces, all key goals from the two thousand and nine official community plan. Once endorsed, these opportunities will naturally require further, more detailed technical study, including geotechnical considerations, economic feasibility, infrastructure and servicing. And as we've heard loud and clear, there are a number of residents who have identified challenges with infrastructure, particularly water, and that being an issue that really needs to be addressed as part of any discussions or... needs to be addressed as part of any discussions or considerations about future growth and change in the community. Community and stakeholder engagement occurred at key stages of this process. They included an initial public workshop held here in this gym on February 6th with over 90 residents in attendance and participating. It was a very lively and, I thought, wonderful community event where people discussed and identified issues but also opportunities for addressing them. It also resulted in a number of big ideas and broad strokes for related specifically to land use development and housing, which in a workshop of over 90 people was a very good result. A second focus group workshop attended by 25 members of the community was held following the February 6th workshop on February 20th. And the purpose of this focus group workshop was to go into more detail and identify a range of suitable housing types, locations, and approaches based on the broad directions established in the first workshop. So the purpose of that second workshop, again, was to go into more detail and building on the broad strokes, the issues, opportunities, and big ideas from workshop number one. And together, these two workshops led to the development of the first draft of the Land Use Master Plan. The third community event was the public open house held September 8th, and I would estimate attended by over 150 residents, which again is, I think, remarkable and wonderful in a community of 1,100-plus people that over 10% of the community wasn't involved in at least two events. So I think that's wonderful. The purpose of the third community open house was to have a community discussion on the broad options and strategies in the plan and have that discussion with fellow residents, with council, with staff, and consultants involved in the process, and importantly, to provide input and feedback on the draft strategies. This process has also included council and staff workshops at key stages to provide input, feedback, and direction on the process but also on strategies and options as they are developed. All documents, staff has been putting all documents as they were developed up on the website, also for community and public review, to maximize the exposure of results from this process to the community. All of this resulted in a set of housing strategies and options developed by the community to help guide future discussions and decisions about sensitive growth and change in the village. So as such, and very important, the Land Use Master Plan is a strategic document, really intended to guide consideration of future updates to the OCP. In support of this, the Land Use Master Plan also includes recommendations for future community and stakeholder engagement that should occur prior to adoption of policies and bylaws that would implement the opportunities and options identified in this plan. So it's important to note that prior to any rezoning and the associated public hearing process that is required, the OCP would need to be updated and amended to reflect any desired change in zoning, and that's either to public or private property. And prior to any amendments or updates to the OCP, a community consultation, including a public hearing process, would be required. So the intent and purpose of the Land Use Master Plan is really to inform those processes, the OCP update and the following zoning process, and not replace them. In this way, the Land Use Master Plan represents an early step in a longer, more involved process involving further community engagement and technical studies that would be required prior to implementation of the opportunities and options identified in the plan. So in contrast, I think it's important to point out that the Land Use Master Plan is not being considered for adoption as a bylaw. The strategies within it, the Land Use Master Plan, are not policies. The Land Use Master Plan does not replace or update the OCP. And further, the Land Use Master Plan does not alter the village's zoning bylaw in any way. As such, the Land Use Master Plan does not commit or legally bind council and staff to any of the strategies and options that are within it, nor does it authorize specific development to occur on public or private property. So I think those points are very important to clarify and point out in terms of the role and purpose of the document. And related to that, and to address some of the comments that were collected, the Land Use Master Plan does not rezone any property. Property, private property, property is rezoned by the landowner, not the municipality, and the landowner needs to apply for a rezoning prior to any land being rezoned.
Counselor Ando?
So you told us what it is not. Can you tell us what it is?
Oh, I preceded that with what it is. Would you like?
Could you? I think that would be helpful, yeah. Thank you, Counselor Ando.
So the Land Use Master Plan is a strategic document intended to guide consideration of future updates to the OCP. In support of this, the Land Use Master Plan includes recommendations for future community and stakeholder engagement that should occur prior to adoption of policies and bylaws that would implement opportunities and options identified in this plan. It is important to note that prior to any rezoning and the associated public hearing process that is required, the OCP would need to be updated to reflect any desired change in zoning, either to public or private property. And prior to any amendments or updates to the OCP, community consultation, including a public hearing process, would be required. So the intent and purpose of the Land Use Plan is to inform these processes, not to replace them. I think that's the key point.
Counselor Ando?
Couldn't a property owner do it now without having the stalking? Apply for zoning change and do it on their own?
A property owner can go through a public hearing process to apply for any change or amendment to the OCP. However.
Would you need to have an amendment to an OCP if I had a large piece of property and I wanted to divide it and make two or make a duplex on it? Do I need this document or I probably need a zoning change because it's probably single family, but do I need this document in order to do that?
So to answer you, I think what was your first question is, do you require an OCP amendment to make a change in zoning? And the answer is yes, if the zoning change is inconsistent with the OCP, all land, all zoning considerations need to be consistent with the OCP. And if the zoning, so if they're going from a single family to a townhouse, and the OCP says that this area is designated for a single family, then that proponent would have to go through both an OCP amendment process and a rezoning. So the OCP is really about a future vision of the community. Zoning is what you are entitled to use your land for today, and those two things need to be consistent.
That applies to all municipalities in British Columbia, that if somebody wants to rezone a property and it's not designated within their OCP, they have to amend their OCP prior to that?
That is correct.
Thank you.
The local government, that requires it.
Can I add another point, that in some municipalities, it's of such a serious nature, I don't know if this would include Lyons Bay, but if it was a serious nature, it would, it actually then comes to Metro Vancouver as well because it's not part of their regional context statement. So Surrey and Coquitlam, Coquitlam went through mediation, Surrey has gone through the court syst, or pardon me, Langley's gone through the court system. So it's something that is in line with our OCP doing the Land Use Master Plan, just as it was in line to go to Translink after the OCP and go from one bus stop to five bus stops, or to go from one small trail to many trailways because we were looking at interconnection. So to more, be more integrated in our thinking about our school and our community. So there's so many different things that are addressed in the OCP, and oddly, it's that kind of season. I've been looking at the 2011 season and look at just a last, a whole section of this letter that was written to the community, and it says at the end, it's all about land and the LUMP who we're facing, and it was discussed in 2008, and then was discussed then, and nobody here knows that I have found this. I didn't know until today. But land master planning as a goal in the Looking Ahead 2011-2014 section, my attention will turn to acquiring land for future public use, for example, for recreation or work yard without cost to the village, but it goes through all of the residential options, et cetera. But we have, sitting at so many different tables, as I have had the opportunity since 1993 to do, understanding the strategic planning and how we have an obligation to our community, for the community to know what we're doing, and for the community to have a say, for the community to be able to say, as Mr. Ganski came forward earlier, don't bring another development in this area, kind of idea, we don't want it. So the community has to have that opportunity to have that say, and well, we're moving along and we're a small community, but that doesn't mean that we're not obligated to do things that larger communities do. We are and we should, so that our community members can participate fully, and we'll make sure that that full participation occurs, but that then it gets articulated in a way that's knowledgeable and does inform the process. So, thank you for that clarification and thank you for those questions. Counselor Ando, is there a follow-up question to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Other council members? Counselor, thank you very much. Mr. McGrath, who I'd reflected when I met on Monday with him, as I normally do, that I, for those of you who watch me listen with a pen for all these years, I also read with a pen. So when I read the 297 pages of comments that each of you participated in to some extent and beyond, and my reflection was this. So I wrote my 10 pages that are here in microscopic print writing, but then the conclusion was, very thoughtful comments, learned a lot, balanced perspectives. And so many of the things that you've commented upon, we saw those themes, and if this was a study in doing a Q-Sort research, we saw water analysis. Please don't rezone my land without knowledge of it. There are just so many different perspectives, but we saw a very, a document that had many shapes and forms to it and would lead us to be more curious rather than more resolved, I think. Counselor Ando?
Thank you. So you've read all of the comments that people have put in? What's your opinion of how this document, the draft, was received and what do you, where do you think that we should go?
Well, that's a great, the question and what we want to talk about tonight, so I'm glad that you asked that. And I have written down some comments on that point. I mean, community discussions about growth and change, especially in the smallest type of community, are by their nature very challenging. They require thoughtful consideration in response to the range of different viewpoints and perspectives that are out there. I think in that way, this process is very beneficial to the community in that it addressed some issues that have been burning issues for certain people in the community, but also really looked to identify and embrace some of the opportunities, some of the wonderful assets of this community as a means of addressing some of these challenges. We've heard, so in reflecting on some of the comments, I mean, the passion and level of engagement that this community, you know, engaged in this process showed that these issues, these challenges, and some of these strategies are important things to talk about at this time. And, you know, and not only talk about, but begin resolving. My reflection on the significant amount of feedback that came in is that one, people on the one hand were very happy to begin this discussion and have some of these difficult conversations, and many of those folks had some questions about some of the strategies or supported others. I think very few people blanket supported every strategy in the document, although upon reflection, there were a number that did. But at the same time, the opposite end of the spectrum, there were comments on what you liked about this plan, and the answer was nothing at all. And those ones kind of caught me off guard in that the document really, given that it is an early step in the process, it really represents a community conversation. And for that alone, I think it's a very useful document for the community. The backgrounder that informed this process had a lot of, I thought, really interesting and innovative and locally-based knowledge and ideas that I think are great use of the community moving forward with. A number of the other comments that were received were related to infrastructure, and a lot of people have anxiety, I think, in this community about estate and the quality of infrastructure, how it's going to be paid for. And similarly, people are anxious about how are they going to be able to continue to live in this community as they age, or as their children move out, and how are their children going to be able to live in the community. There were also comments on the process itself, that some people who were really glad to have undertaken the process, that would have liked more engagement and would like to continue the conversation moving forward. And I think that is in the spirit of this document because this is a starting point. It lays out some suggestions for future consultation and engagement that should occur as each and every one of these opportunities are considered. On the other spectrum, there were people said, what a waste of time, what a waste of time, we shouldn't have undertaken this process. So that's, and then everything in between. I think a lot of the comments were, and really this document is intended to be used, a lot of the comments were, well, I really like this aspect, and there's, you know, we got a lot of information and we, you know, either within the document or elsewhere in the community, we can proceed on that one. I kind of like this other idea, but we need more information before we go down that path. And this idea, I don't care what the information tells us, I don't like it. So there was a lot of thoughtful responses, and this document is, that's why this document was never proposed to be adopted as an amendment to the OCP, rather it's a kit of tools. It's a set of strategies that can guide incremental updates to the OCP and subsequent to that, any changes in zoning. Again, those would be at the discretion of council and would involve, you know, detailed community engagement and public hearing processes.
Counselor Ando?
Thank you. So on that, how would you ensure that the wish feeling, the will of the residents from the comments is reflected in the document?
The, um, the will and the, I think the words used, the will or the perspectives on the document, as you know, were extremely diverse. And I think the package of verbatim comments, as well as the summary of all of the feedback we received at the open house itself, and in fact, all of the community and public information that we input that has been collected through this process has all been documented. And much of that leading up to the last open house, well, all of that is synthesized and incorporated into the three documents. So in that way, all the great ideas that were collected at the first two open houses, and some of people's anxieties and concerns as well, are all captured and synthesized. They're captured verbatim in separate documents and synthesized within the backgrounder and the plan document itself. Perhaps what you're suggesting is. Perhaps what you're suggesting is, is that a companion document be created that summarizes the feedback that the community has provided since the open house to make sure that there's a public record, not just of the plan and the strategies, but people's support or objections and everything in between to them. Is, so that's, I think, one, one way to ensure that there's a public record of, I mean, I think there is already a public record because all of these documents are public and we approach them online. Perhaps a summary of the public feedback would be an important companion document to the land's record.
I, I think that would be helpful to have that as a companion document, although the, the resolution that will come forward isn't to adopt, it's to receive. But I have just a couple of questions. And one is that when you read up out your prepared comments, I found that very helpful. And I thought that the community would find it very helpful. And I wondered if that couldn't be posted on the website and also sent out to council if we could. Oh, that the documents that Mr. Karakis has just read, if that could be, I found it very, I don't know if council would like.
I was going to ask him for a copy.
Yeah, exactly. And so if we can, I don't know if it requires a motion of us to put that forward, but it is part of that overall, making sure that the community is informed. I think that a summary document would be a great complement to this. You know, people read and, you know, quickly and et cetera. And one of the things that I noted, and I say it with all due respect, is that out of the 297 pages, there are many repeats of documents in there because, and I even, when I was reading it, I thought, I bet I was responsible for this because I always send anything that's sent to me, I send forward. So I thought, how many times have I done this? Sent my community members' thoughts forward, made sure that they got put up and, put up multiple times. But I thought it was, so I noted that and I tried to, to graze through, but I recognize too that I'm used to going through fairly lengthy documents. So I think a summary would be helpful. Uh, Councilor Ando and then Mr. McGrath.
Not only a summary document, but I believe that all of these comments that people have put in, a lot of them are questions and a lot of uncertainty. And I think that we should start to address some of these, these questions. And so if you have synthesized them down to 10 pages, you know, maybe we could start to try and address some of the questions that are there and put that information out into the community. I think that that would be useful because stopping it now or postponing it for the next council, I think we, we raise the level of awareness on this topic. And then to push it to the next council, I think is a little bit unfair. We were the ones that started this process. We were all there during the, through the whole process. And I think that we should answer the questions that we raised in the community. That would be my perspective.
Uh, Councilor Reinslee?
I'd like to thank you very much for all that clarity and, and enlightenment as it is. I regret that the whole community isn't here to hear.
Yeah.
I really do.
I do too.
I think it's, I think it's, it's a wonderful clarification of what really took place. As far as a summary, I think I would like, love to see that. As far as finishing it in this council, nothing gets finished in any council. I, I'm really, I'm really very pleased with the steps we've taken, with the outline that we've come to. There's much more to be done. And I think the summary, and I, it's my opinion, that it would be very useful and it would, it would be an aid to people knowing what's, what's been, what's, what it's all about. I'd also like to say that there were many people that didn't enter their points of view in the document. We heard it in other places. It's not articulated. We heard it on the telephone. We heard it in the backyard. We heard it at the mailbox. We heard it all over the place. There's a, a known, in any issue, there's a known silent majority. I do believe if we, if we realize that as a reality in anything that's going on, we can move forward. I think just to address the, and I, I think it's, it's worthy of addressing the issues brought forward as Councilor Ando mentioned, but I don't think it's the focus. And I, so I, I, I thank you very much for what you brought to this meeting. I hope it's recorded for posterity and it's very useful and I, I think we can move forward with a strategy achieved, not finished, and going forward to work with it as a document for the future. So that's all I have to say. Big, big thank you.
Mr. McGrath?
Madam Mayor and Council, I think one of the things that I, I guess refer back to is the very discussion that council had with respect to the minutes. There were some comments made by one of our residents saying that it'd capture her, her intent. And I caution council for undertaking a summary at this point in time because there are so many pages of, I think, really good comments.
There are.
And I think it would do a disservice to those people who have made those comments to try to summarize or try to interpret them. The reason that I'm, I've made the recommendation is that the new council take a look at it, is that you, you've got a renewed mandate and you've got a new council that's going to be coming in in less than a month. And this is not a product that's going to go away. These are serious questions that the community have a lot of questions to. And I think it's only fair, and I think it's respectful, that the new council has an opportunity to look at unaltered comments because I think they should have all the comments that were brought forward to the community. As you pointed out, there are many, many pages of that. The other part simply is, is that, you know, there's a month left in this term of office. And we've been in this process now for many, many months. To fully expect that we're going to be able to answer those questions with the due respect that, that they've been asked, I think, is, is rushing it.
No.
And I think a product, you know, a, a work like this needs much more review. I would certainly hope that the new council would have many meetings to deal with this, this topic, answer those questions. Because, you know, whether or not you like it, change will happen. And I think council needs to address these questions, whether it's going to be supportive, make these changes, amendments, whatever. But I think this is not going to be a quick fix. It's not going to be something that I, I, I hope that you throw away to the side or table. You've had a very good debate and discussion in the community. I think the community deserves to have this discussed in detail without a defined timeline upon which this is going to be completed.
Okay, I'm just going to go to myself and then Councilor Ando, just keeping my speaker's list. Just one brief comment. And that is just in relation to what Councilor Ando's comments were earlier, is just that there's so many requests in there and to Mr. McGrath's point, that for further community consultation, that's probably one of the top rated remarks across all positions or perspectives. And so I think that it is important, from my perspective, to give the document an opportunity to breathe and to be reviewed and read and maybe vetted for one iteration of each of the documents that's in there versus people going, oh, have I repeated myself? Because there's a whole section of direct repeats, but it's after that section of direct repeats that really a whole nother section of one time only that haven't been said before comes. So you have to kind of hang in there in the document. And that's really enriching as well. So I would, myself, like to see further community consultation that runs its course, that has that opportunity, just as I say, as Mr. Oliver Ganski came in earlier, to really seize the day, if you like, for his own neighborhood. And that was certainly reflected in what I read in the document. And so, so just giving that opportunity for everybody to feel like they have the opportunity. Councilor Ando?
So, I would agree that there needs to be a lot more discussion and, and community involvement in where this document goes. But I, I believe that the council, we have a month, and I think a month should be long enough to answer some of the main questions or the bigger questions. We don't have to answer all of them. But I think that we, we owe it to the residents in the community to answer the questions that have been raised rather than leave it for another six weeks or a month or two months. We don't know what the outcome of the election is and who's going to be on council. They don't have, they may or may not have the background. So I don't think, that's why I think that this council should address the, the questions or the main questions that have been asked to the best of our ability. There are some things we may not know. So when we answer those questions honestly to the residents, we don't know the answer to that. We hope that that would be in the next, you know, the next topic of discussion after the lump, i- is, something's done with it. But I, I think that we need to provide those kinds of answers to the community because there's a whole bunch of questions that are out there. And without addressing them, that's, I believe that's the first step to, to move forward.
If I can, yes, Ms. McGrath.
In three, Madam Mayor. I, I think we all fully agree that the questions need to be answered, you know, but they need to be answered correctly and in detail. I think it would be disrespectful, in my mind, to try to rush any of those answers. We are moving, you know, we have less than a month. We've got the community center we've got to move into, we're going to be moving within the next few weeks back into it. That's going to be incredibly disruptive. We are going to, we've got an election we've got to prepare for, we've got all of that work to, to deal with. We've got capital works that the manager of public works has got to deal with. There are a lot of things that we're moving forward. We can certainly start this process and I, and I think, you know, we are, you know, I've been speaking, you know, with Joaquin and, and there's some questions here that, you know, we are starting to look at. And I think, you know, we can start preparing for, for that. But to build an expectation that we're going to be answering, you know, the top questions is, I, I think is, is going to be challenged, challenging.
If I can, go to Ron, myself, Councilor Ando, did I have, Councilor Bain, you haven't spoken. So I'm going to go to councillor McGlocklin, councillor Bain, councillor Ando, and then myself.
Thank you, Mayor Broughton. Substantially, Mr. McGrath stole my thunder by raising his hand a little faster. There isn't a bandolier of silver bullets in front of me, it's my glass case. And I think that really the piece here is that it's not a quick shot. This is a serious, very serious topic that takes some time to flesh out. And with the activities that the staff have to accomplish, I don't see that they're going to be able to dedicate the time that is going to flesh out a variety of these answers to the quality and to the level of depth without doing studies to back up the scenarios and that to really arrest the issue until, whether this council is continuing its term or not, my view would be the same. It's just a time for relaxation on this point. As I reflect over the last year, administration has done their job in finding and recommending to us the best project managers for this. Project managers have come up with a credible report with good scenarios, broad and depth and deep. It's now council's job to do the final step on this one because it's being put in front of us now.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bain?
Yeah. Pardon me. I was blocking, I didn't say anything. A few points, actually. First of all, I really appreciate your report tonight. I think you got all the things in place that needed to be addressed. As far as a summary is concerned, I'm not in favor of a summary because I think we should be passing on the raw data for the next council and for the community. I think it would be a mistake for us to have anybody interpret the raw data. I think everybody is intelligent enough to read and get their own opinions on it. And I would prefer that distinctly. The other thing is, I think the report has our thumbprint, this council's thumbprint all over it. And as was pointed out by Mr. McGrath, who, we've got about a month left, there's not much we can do about it. I understand the desire to finish things, but we're not going to get this one finished. And we have to pass it on to the new council. If we ask, or if we answer, pardon me, some of the questions, the new council may have a totally different perspective on it than us. And they will be there because the public wants them there to answer those questions rather than us. So in a sense, I think we could very well be wasting our time if we try to answer questions that the long-term ones coming in after us would be answering. So again, I would like to just see us accept, receive this and hand it off and let the new council deal with it with community involvement and all that's involved. And I would just be better with that one. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Ando?
I believe that residents have asked council questions and council needs to provide an answer. And so as we've done in the past with the community center renewal project, we have, Mayor Broughton has taken, taken different questions and answered them and then it's circulated amongst council. And we, we edited and then we put it out. That's what I believe, that the residents have asked council questions, not asked staff because residents want to know what our intent and the direction that we were going. And they were asking specific questions of what the document was and what it represented. And I think that we should answer those while we're still here and we still have a month to do that. I believe that there's time and we should do it.
If I can, are you wishing?
I'll be the last because I've spoken.
Okay. I have spoken, so I have, so I, please go ahead and then I'll speak.
If we, if we do have a summary, I think it should have a preamble that this is not a replacement. It's not indeed a, a, a way to get through it quickly. It's, it's an aid, it's not a replacement. Different people read different amounts and with different desires, sorry, the reading. And I think it's an aid, like anything else, it's not a replacement.
I get that.
So if that could be part of it, I would, I would like that very much. As far as, council has been going on for how many years here? Forty years or something like that, starting with Alderman, as I read the history and way back.
Almost forty-four years.
And council, a given council has a term. The idea of a couns, of council continuum is not only stated, but implicit in the system that we belong to. So I do not worry that, that another council is unable, regardless of its continuity, unable to deal with this. Council will go on and after the next council, there'll be another council. That's the way it is. And we have to have faith in our, our process, once again, and our history, which has served us well. And so I don't think the reality is that a, a council does its work and walks away and then there's a next council will pick it up. There's a continuum. And in that regard, I'm very comfortable with moving it forward for the next council.
Okay. If I can just mention a couple of things in relation to what Councilor Ando is saying, is that having read the document, and there's many, 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 many questions in it, but there's a couple that are just outstanding that we've already sort of addressed tonight that might be helpful for people to understand and are in Mr. Karakis's document. that might be helpful for people to understand and are in Mr. Karakis's document, report. And one of them is, and that's the, the clear statement that this isn't rezoning. And also to make the clear statement that it's received, not adopted, and how important that is to understand what the meaning of that is. The water analysis, I think, is an important thing to address because people, if Lions Bay, if it's going to grow to X, two X, whatever, half an X, not at all, then it, that determines whether or not we do water analysis and what type of water analysis. So one of the things that's a consistent message in this report is fiscal prudence. And so it, we have done this in a prudent manner, that we do need to do land use planning for the community and with the community, with the community, and coming together with our differences. Our differences don't have to be a same voice ever, but we do need to come together to discuss what those differences are and where it really matters, that we win, where it matters that we compromise, and where it matters that we do nothing at all, to create a vital community, which was another strong theme. People want a vital community. And so with the water analysis and the theme of fiscal prudence, I think if that could be maybe added or clarified in Mr. Karakis's report, that, that we're not putting the cart before the horse, but the land planning discussion with the community does need to occur before we throw money at an analysis where we don't know what we're analyzing as yet, or what part of the community, because we do have two different intakes. We have different opportunities in terms of, of that or, or not, however people want to frame it. But I do think that could be covered off also in the report, but perhaps in, in most commonly covered concern, that the water analysis and infrastructure analysis would be abated until, I don't mean our regular infrastructure analysis, that certainly planning would go on, but the actual water analysis makes sense, looking at fiscal prudence to come following us having knowledge about what our hope for plan is. And you can see how strategic the plan is because it might be a hope for plan. Everybody might come together on a hope for plan, and it might be, yes, you can do that, no problem, or no, slither it back. So, so I think that that makes some sense, but that was, and then the rezoning, which I think you've covered. But to Councilor Ando's point, people probably want to know those questions in reading the whole document. They came up, even within single documents, many times. If it was a large document, it came up many times. So, so I'd just say that that would be simply done to Mr. McGrath's point, speaking of fiscal prudence, and to Councilor Bain's point, and Mr. Karakis's point around summaries, and, and Councilor McGlocklin's point, that it's nice for people to read the raw data. What I would say, and it doesn't have to be done right away, but at some point, if the redundancies could be taken out of the document, that would be great, just so that people don't stop reading when they think they're in a duplicated run. And as I say, I might have been responsible for some of those duplications. So I read it, I was feeling, oh my gosh. And, and then what I'd like to do is ask Mr. McGrath to, to read out the, his recommendation. He has sent this recommendation out by e-post to all of the community, and I think that was done last week, for review. And then a follow-up, and I don't know if it was follow-up to just us what receive means, because receive is just receiving. It's not, it's receiving the document for information. But I do think that what would be helpful is just a core piece was if we can add a commitment there for, to encourage the, the next council to continue with community consultation. If that could be added in some way of encourage, or we can't, we can't mandate that, but we can encourage.
Well, through you, Madam Mayor. Originally, when I sent this out, you know, the, many communities have referring motions, that you refer it to, to a specific date or table it to a specific date. In looking at the, the procedure bylaw, it, it reads is that a council member may make only the following motions, which is quite restrictive. So by reading this, the motion that I'm going to, that I've proposed, which essentially says the same thing, but it's actually postponed to a certain time.
Okay.
And so it says, "Council receive the land use master plan and all public comments and postpone discussion of the land use master plan to a meeting to be scheduled in January 2015." It was actually postponed to a certain time, which is January of 2015, which means that it'll come forward and be placed on an agenda in January.
In January. Okay, so how about if we, have you read out the, the motion loud enough for everybody to hear, and then I'll ask for a mover and a seconder, and, and then any further discussion?
"Council receive the land use master plan and all public comments and postpone discussion of the land use master plan to a meeting to be scheduled in January 2015."
Do I have a mover and a seconder? Thank you. Councilor McGlocklin and Councilor Bain. If it, I'd like to put forward just a, an amendment, just to say, and to encourage future council to continue the community consultation process. Would that be, do I have a mover and a seconder for that amendment? Councilor Bain and Councilor Ronsley, thank you. And will, any discussion on the amendment? There being none, call question on the amendment. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. And going back to the main motion.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. If I can, is there any further discussion? Call question on the motion, all those in favor? Carried and opposed? Pardon me? Abstained? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for this deliberative discussion and for the document that you've brought forward. Now, if I can put forward one, two untied things that are on table right now. One is Mr. Ganski's signature document regarding that particular area, and how does it get included? So I don't know if we need a resolution to include it in the feedback, if we could, to post it. I think it would be.
Madam Mayor, the, the time period has, has ended. And so if council wishes to have any material, I guess, referred to the, to this particular meeting, then a motion should come forward.
Yeah. Being that it is a petition and it does directly go to the document, I haven't looked at the petition, I didn't know about the petition, just so that I can be completely transparent, came as a complete surprise, but the area didn't come as a surprise. But not trying to influence it, but to, this is public participation, and, and to know that we're not going to have this on the agenda again until January, but it has been formally, if you like, presented to us. So is there, would, would we be able to, what my recommendation is, is that council receive the, again, not to comment on it, but receive the petition and have the petition noted.
Be brought forward with the agenda.
Oh, perfect. That's, that's, I think that would comfort Mr. McGrath, too, because in the sense of fairness, well, in the sense of fairness to all those who did respond, so that it be brought forward with the document in January 2015. I think that's an excellent idea. Would, so if I can just ask if a motion, could I have a mover and seconder? Thank you very much. And a seconder, thank you very much, Councilor Bain, that the, that council requests that the petition that was presented to us this evening by Mr. Ganski with twenty-six names on it be brought forward with the land use master plan document and feedback for council review and consideration. Thank you. So I. Yes, Mr.?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. And any discussion? Call question on the motion, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. I think those are my two resolutions that I wanted to bring forward, yes.
Madam Mayor, just, I guess, to, to finish this, and I think just to elaborate a little bit on the, on the report that, or the letter that I sent out to the citizens, and I guess, following from what, you know, our consultants have said, is that these are very important questions that our community is asking itself. And I, and I must congratulate council for taking this on because these questions will be here, they'll continue, and there's not a single silver bullet that's going to answer any of these questions. It's going to be a culmination of a number of decisions. I, I put forward to what I think you've all read in the paper, if you haven't read, what happened in the city of North Vancouver recently, where they had spent many months, if not a better part of a year, to develop a new official community plan. It was defeated. In discussing this with both staff and members of the community as well as, as council, they didn't see that as a defeat. They said it was good dialogue. And the dialogue was allowing them to discuss density, it allowed them to discuss housing options, it allowed them to discuss policing options, it allowed them to have a good dialogue. If you remember, a year ago, the Squamish Nation had a land use plan as well. They spent almost two years having dialogue with their community. And in the end, the community, because it was a vote by the community, defeated it. When speaking with chief and council and, and members of the Squamish Nation, they said, "It allowed us to have that dialogue." And I think everybody said, there were parts of it they liked, parts of it they didn't like. And what they were pleased with was the ability to have the process. And so what this has done is that it has sparked the discussion, and it will hopefully lead to some of the, the comments being answered. And at the end, it's going to be the community that decides which are the, in, by, through the election, which parts are going to be good, which parts aren't going to be good for, for this community. But again, I must congratulate both council and I think the community for taking this dialogue forward.
Thank you very much. I would certainly echo that as well. I think the community, there's been so many times in our community that we've needed to come together, and it's been tough, tough dialogue. And, and I've read something recently, tough, not rough, right? So we want to be in that dialogue, tough, but maybe not rough. And I think we're getting better at that, so that we can enunciate our differences and express them, listen to them, and debate them and, and look at those things. I had a call the other night, so I'll just maybe finish with this unless there's other comments, and it was a group of citizens that are, that have taken this and, and they're rethinking how they'd like to improve their own properties. It's just one of those sort of cute little byproducts, not, not expand or do anything, but improve. And I thought, isn't this funny? One of the unexpected little outcomes that you have through dialogue like this leads people to look at, well, what would I like to do? And, and how would I like things to look, and how can I contribute to the community? So just on that odd note, you can certainly share that with, with anybody that you'd like to share it with, just a complete unexpected consequence. So I've just.
If I could just echo the comments that I, I would applaud the community for undertaking this, this process and council as well, and engaging at an early stage in these difficult discussions, because they're not easy to have, and there are very strong diverse viewpoints. Grab brought up a couple of examples of communities that, that jumped right into, into the policy work, perhaps before the community was able to have some of those early discussions. And to paraphrase, you there about let off a little bit of steam.
Right.
And so I, I thought that the community events, especially the first two, were very productive, very, very respectful and useful as part of an ongoing discussion and dialogue about growth and change in the community. Hopefully, this document and all of the associated commentary and feedback is really a starting point, but will hopefully be an ongoing discussion and engaged community discussion.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you for your work on this. So if you can maybe add a little bit to that document, share it with council, if there's any bullets pertaining to the water.
Am I speaking now?
Yeah. If they can then go to Ms. Coontz, that would be wonderful, and circulated to council and to the community through the website. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Excellent. So what I'm going to do is go to item seven B and ask Councilor Bain if he would preside over seven B. Thank you so much. And I'm going to recuse myself again because I am a part owner of the Lions Bay General Store and Cafe. Thank you. Oh, there we go.
There you go, sir.
I'm just going to walk out, and if you could just delay your discussion until I'm right out the door. Thank you.
Okay, we have before us a report to council on the update on the aisle view three heading. And, oh, not loud enough? Oh, okay. And the author of the update is interim CIO Grant McGrath, and so I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't go through the, the document in detail. I think it, it stands on its own, and I think it, it hopefully provides some of the questions that were asked and some of the information that was asked that be gathered. I believe before you, I've spoken with BC Hydro, I've spoken with, received material from, as requested, from Dr. Broughton, and also from Steve's Trees, the owner of the company. We've, I've discussed this both with Minister Transportation Highways, the representative as well, and with Chapman Land Surveying to confirm the property lines and, and who's the owners of different properties. I think at the, I'll just, I guess, without going into detail, is, is, I guess I'll just go to page three of the report, which is page fifteen of four ninety-nine. In summary, the Chapman survey dated September twenty-second has listed nine stumps. And I, I put nine stumps in there because it didn't show all the stumps into the area, but I wanted to be able to determine from Steve's Trees whether these nine, which are the closest to the property line, were, were cut. I was advised that none of the trees from Steve's Trees were cut. There are other stumps and trees cut, but were not listed due to cost. The intent was to try and determine who cut these marked trees. BC Hydro advised the two significant trees may have been cut and others may have been cut, but most likely not. Dr. Broughton has advised that he did not initiate cutting of trees south of the Fullville property on Isle View Place, nor did he direct Steve's Trees or Tree Service or any other company to cut or trim such trees on the south side of the Fullville property. Mr. Steve Hotzak, owner of Steve's Tree Service, confirmed that Steve's Tree Service did not cut any of the marked trees, nor any trees south of the edge of the Fullville property, nor was he asked to do so by Dr. Broughton or anyone else. Council has received that, has accepted that the fir tree and maple tree straddling the east property line that were trimmed and not cut on Isle View Place are not, did not require a tree permit on a, without prejudice basis. I believe your comments, Acting Mayor, I think summarize, I think, the, the whole issue. And it's really is that I've been unable to determine or find an actual witness of who cut those trees. We know trees were cut. I attempted to try to find out whether they were cut in 2014. The document says, when I talked to the arborists, that it'd be difficult to determine whether they were cut in 2014. Even if they were cut in 2014, we still don't know who cut those trees. Even if they were cut in 2014, we still don't know who cut those trees. So anyways, at the end of this report, without a clear, I guess, picture, or of somebody cutting those trees, from the information I've got, from the people I've spoken to, it's almost impossible to determine who cut those trees. If, in fact, that comes to light in the future, then counsel can, can then deal with it. I believe those are some of your comments.
Counselor Andel?
I have a few questions, if you don't mind. I'd like to know, where did the survey come from on page nineteen, the one that you provided on September sixteen?
Thank you. From Chapman Land Surveying.
This is page nineteen of three ninety-nine, not four ninety-nine. The one that you provided on page nineteen, can you tell us where the survey came from?
This one here? This is, this, this survey?
Yes.
This is from, this, I'm assuming it's from the municipality. This is a municipal document.
So the municipality had this document the whole time, but we've been, should you check?
Sorry, what's the answer? Okay, there.
Well, she said it's the document that she, that we sent to Hydro, but I asked, where did it come from? So we, we, we've had this, the village has had this in their possession from the beginning. Okay, so it had to come from somewhere, right?
Okay, so it's a municipal document.
So it's a municipal document. So, okay. Do we know what year this document's from?
No, you don't.
My point would be that we could have probably saved every, lots of people a lot of time and a lot of money by having researched this. So one of the questions that I've asked at the previous council meeting is, what is the procedure for when somebody applies for a tree permit? What is the procedure if somebody has complained that there's been trees cut on municipal property? And at that time, you didn't know, and we still don't know. I think that that would be prudent to know those kinds of information, so that we either have a policy, or that everybody is aware, because the direction that I see that this is going is that if there isn't a, someone shooting a picture with, or taking, taking a picture of someone cutting the trees, that the village will almost never know who cut the trees, and that makes it kind of open season on municipal property trees. How are we ever going to enforce our bylaw if, you know, we've got tree cutting right next to the, or to the adjacent property, and we have people who have driven by, but maybe didn't walk down the bank in order to see who was cutting the trees? We've got trees that are fallen, that are there, and still there, yet the village can't determine who cut the trees, so we're not going to do anything. Are we not opening Pandora's Box to open season on trees? How do we prevent that? Can someone answer that?
Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of things that, I guess, come about on this, is that I was not aware that the village actually has a policy that if the complaint, if there, people believe trees were cut on public property, then the complainant, which I believe you received when you were first elected, a copy of that, so did all the counsel, I was not aware of that until, until last week. What, the, the facts of this case are, is that a gentleman, a resident, has said that he cut trees on private property. That's the statement. Then it moved forward saying, well, we don't believe that that statement is true. Okay, then came about, okay, let's get a survey to know where those trees exactly were, and I believe Dr. Broughton provided that on the east side. Counsel dealt with that item. There were then, people acknowledged that there are trees cut on the south side. The question really was, is that who owned that property? There was discussion at the very beginning that either the Minister Environment, or the Minister Transportation Highways, or somebody else may have acquired that land, and the, any surveys or maps that we had may not have shown that. And in fact, I believe up until quite recently, there was belief that this unopened road was acquired by MOT. Through the research, we discovered that that was incorrect, that the area to the north of, sorry, the east of that property was actually acquired by MOT. So what the survey then showed is that there were trees cut on the southern portion, not within the municipal boundary, or not on private property. The question and the facts of this case are, we don't know who cut them. We've attempted to try to figure out, you know, without a clarification. One would hope that people in this municipality, or any municipality, are following the rules. If somebody cuts trees or breaks the law, we're going to try to find out who broke the law. The trouble is, we simply, I, I simply don't know how to do that. There's allegations that somebody did, well, it's true, somebody cut those trees. MOT says they haven't cut the trees. BC Hydro says they may have cut, or they did cut two, maybe more, but they're not sure. Until, until sometime, somebody can actually show who cut those trees, we can't, you know, we can't go any further.
Counselor Andel, if you have a comment?
No, I'd like to refrain from commenting right now, please.
Counselor Andel, if you have a follow-up?
Yes. Very early on, so the, the first notice that counsel received that trees had been cut was by Mr., an email by Mr. Stoddard. We received that email, which was forwarded by Ms. Koontz, at five o'clock in the afternoon. By ten o'clock that evening, we had received a response from Dr. Broughton. That was before it was on the public record. So for me, there's a problem there first, that how did Dr. Broughton know that somebody had complained, complained to the village for him to provide a reply? That's wrong for me. That's number one. Number two, when the public covers came, one of their main concerns was, first questions that they asked was, whose land is it on? So I believe that we, when a resident asks that, we, we should be able to check our records, find a document like this, and say, yes, trees were cut on village property, and then do the due diligence to follow through with whatever needs to be done thereafter. Finding this document six months after the fact, and then claiming that we don't know who cut the trees, doesn't work for me. It's kind of a problem for me. I really think that we dropped the ball on this, and, and it's, at a number of times, when we were asked to do things, and, and we just didn't follow through with our due diligence to do that. With regards to the trees being cut, and, and the timing of the trees, because you put that timing into question, then, there's a thing called copicing, which is on page two of this. Copicing is, and I'll pass them up. Copicing is when you cut a tree, the, the roots stay alive, and then new shoots will come up. From that, you can tell when the tree was cut. It's a long-established way, and this, this was actually introduced to me by the Compliance and Enforcement Officer for the Ministry of Forests and Lands and Natural Resources, which is in my memo to counsel. So I think it's very clear, and the... I think it's clear that the trees were cut at the same time, that Mr. McDonald, who is a Compliance and Enforcement Officer with the Ministry of Forests and Lands and Natural Resources, has visited the site, and he has looked at those stumps, and it's his belief that the maple trees to the south of Law Thirty were cut sometime, sometime within the last growing season, likely March or spring of this year, and that coping verifies this. So to put into question when the trees were cut, it doesn't work for me. And then, when Mr. and Mrs. Pulville came, at the first meeting that they came, they gave a full list of all the trees that were cut.
You mean public covers?
Mr. Public Covers, excuse me. And, and when they gave that list, that list has never been disputed by Dr. Broughton, and so, and he's been very responsive to answering or refuting any fact that the public covers or I had put on the record. And so I don't understand why this, why we're not accepting that the list that Mr. Public Cover provided to counsel on April the twenty-second, he provided to counsel by email, the complete list, we should be accepting that list. And in that list, included in that list are the nine trees that have been identified in the survey that, that Mr. McGrath, who has asked Chapman's to survey. So I believe that there's enough evidence to say that we know who did it, because the adjacent trees are done. There's been a number of residents that saw Steve's Trees doing work down there. Nobody has ever said that there's been anybody else in and around that time that any other work was being done in that area. You know, we may not have a picture, but I think we painted a pretty good picture of who did that, who's responsible for cutting those trees.
If I can weigh in on this one, I think the issue for me is, there's no dispute on the trees that Mr. Public Cover has identified as having been cut. I mean, it's pretty obvious. The numbering, it's, it's a given, it's fine. There's been a lot of concern and everything about what's going on there, yet I'm looking at it for the sake of the village and protection of the village, and I am very cautious about making an allegation about, against somebody when they have a signed document, and we don't have a signed witness identifying who actually cut the trees. Any circumstantial evidence, I think we're going to have, we would have a very difficult time proving in court, and I think we would be burning all kinds of cash on legal assessments to try and prove it. Now, I think it's, we have made mistakes along the way on this process, I grant you that. Part of the problem is, we, we don't have a lot of corporate knowledge, because we've had high staff turnover in the years, which is unfortunate. As far as whose property it was, I may have led Mr. McGrath a little bit astray at one time, because our experience on Alberta Creek, when the expropriation of our property took place, Highways took a portion of the land from the fence into our existing property, and we actually have Hydro right away, right along the edge of our property, and I put the question to him, could that have happened here? Is it ours, or is it not? This could be an old document, we don't know how accurate it is. It's only since we've checked with Highways, Mr. McGrath has found that, no, they didn't do that there. So we had to explore it. But as it is now, I, I would have great difficulty carrying this too much farther if we cannot have strong evidence to say who actually did it. Because someone working in an area is not, is not a tight enough case, in my opinion, to assume they have done it. Maybe nobody saw them, maybe somebody did. If somebody saw it and could actually identify who cut those trees, I'd be a lot more comfortable moving this thing forward. But I think, I think we're almost at a standstill here. We've, the village has been violated by somebody. We just, we need to know who did it, and we need to have ironclad evidence of who did it before we can enact the village bylaw, find whoever did it, because they did it without permission. If we find somebody without adequate evidence, they would have every right to take us to court, if we, if we got it wrong. I don't want to get it wrong.
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of points. I don't believe that Mr. and Mrs. Public Cover actually want a fine, they just want some accountability and people to be responsible for what happened, and maybe some remediation should the bank need, need some, some remediation. So if you don't impose a fine, will there be a lawsuit against the village? That would be a question. But I find in, in Dr. Broughton's letters and correspondences, I find him to be very ambiguous quite often. So in, in his email, if you look on page fifteen, where he quotes, interim CIO McGrath quotes Michael Broughton's letter, the last line, and it says, "He is well within the property line, as Mr. Pulville understood it and communicated it to Steve and me." So it always leaves this door open, that now, now, now I wonder, did Mr. Pulville actually know where his property line was? So if Mr. Pulville thought his property line was, you know, forty yards to the south of where his property line actually was, then this statement is true. If he didn't know, or if he did know, then this statement would be false, but nobody, we, we never checked this, and why does Dr. Broughton's comments always come with some qualification and, and, and always remain ambiguous? It, it's just, there's never a clear cut, yes, I did, no, I did not, and without any qualifications. That's what, you know, always leads to more questions, and, and allows, doesn't allow me to, to, to drop it, because I, it raises more questions for me.
Counselor Andel?
Yes, there's one, there are a lot of confusion here in my mind, but one of the things that does jump out to me is that we are questioning the authenticity of the statements made by Steve of Steve's Trees. The doc, we'll question, are they, is he speaking the truth? Is this really true? That's what, that's what it seems to me the question is going forward, and I think, Counsel Andel, it, it, you've, you've just kind of encouraged that, I don't mean beyond that, I mean, the discussion tonight encourages us to question, is what he is saying, Mr. Steve of Steve's, is he telling the truth? And I don't think that's our job, as, as a counselor, as a municipality, to question a, a document that has been authenticated by the person who's saying, he's been working in the neighborhood anyway, and so it suggests that Steve has done this. Is that what, am I misreading what you're, or misinterpreting what you're saying? Perhaps I am, and then I, I beg forgiveness. However, I don't want to get it, excuse me, I don't want to get into the business of looking at a signed document and off, and saying, hmm, is this true or isn't it true? I, I think I have to accept it, because I'm not capable, and I'm not sure anybody is here, of saying this is true or false. This is what he says, so it's up to him, and he signed on, Steve's Trees, you know, that he didn't, that he, yes, now, help me there.
Well, Counsel Andel?
There are two residents that have had conversations with Steve shortly after the cutting, so around April the, somewhere between the tenth and the twentieth, let's say. And in those two conversations, two separate residents, they asked whether Steve was responsible for all the trees that were cut in that area, and Steve admitted that he had cut all the trees in that area. One followed up with an email, not to Steve, but to the other resident, saying, yes, Steve had said that they cut. Is that enough of a smoking gun for counsel? Would they accept that, that they had had conversations at the time, saying that Steve had cut all the trees that were cut in that period of time?
But then you're going down the same road that I'm questioning. We, we have to look at something that's signed and sealed by the... We have to look at something that's signed and sealed by the author himself, saying not, I don't think we're capable of doing that.
That's fine, if that's what you think. I would think that there are people that are out there that may misrepresent what they say, may not be telling the whole truth. And so, for reasons unbeknownst to us. So, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, I think that if there's other evidence that says it's not the whole truth, then, you know, we should consider the whole picture and all of the facts, and not just because someone may be willing to write a document that misrepresents the facts, that, you know, we shouldn't take it as carte blanche.
Okay.
Just one more, regarding that, and it's on the agenda for the future for the council in the bylaw review. I know that the tree policy and the tree is being, is up for review, it won't be in time to answer this, but in fact, you said, how are we gonna see that this doesn't happen in the future? I, it's my understanding that the tree, is that correct? It's one of the ones you've talked about.
Just as a caution, if I may, I think we're, statements are being made that are pretty close to libelous, and I just caution everybody is that there could be other words that you can use. I just caution because if there's gonna be any suit for liable, it'll be against the village. So I just caution everybody to, you know, be careful what they say. I think it could be said without making libelous statements, I just caution everybody.
Okay, if I can just weigh in on that, from where I listened to all the talk on this, is that based on the evidence, the hard evidence we have right now, we don't have conclusive evidence to say other than that we don't know who cut the trees. That's where we're at right now. Should somebody come forward with firsthand, I heard this, or this was said, or anything, would we get an answer from legal counsel where that would be strong enough evidence? I don't know.
Three, Mr. Mayor. If somebody came forward with clear evidence of who cut those trees, then, one is that we could take, the municipality could take action, or two, we could take it to the RCMP.
Right. So, and I'm not trying to cut off the discussion, but Counsel, pardon me, Mr. McGrathu has made a recommendation on this, that council receive the interim CAO's report for information, that council take no further action on this file. But I would say that that would mean that it's not closed, the issue is not closed, but no further action without irrefutable evidence would be taken. And if irrefutable evidence comes forward, then I would think we would have to have another look at it. But I just, I just question the time spent discussing something when we're talking about things we can't prove right now. And I'm not really, I'm not really amenable to hearsay evidence or circumstantial evidence, but if somebody witnessed what you're suggesting had happened, I suppose we would have to have a look at it, but I would certainly want to have a legal counsel guiding us on that one. But as sort of a codicil to all that, regardless of who cut the trees, I would like to encourage all the parties involved to engage with each other, to find a way to tidy up the area in a mutually agreeable manner, because it is a bit of a mess there, and I don't see any reason why that part of the process can't be completed. But I would leave that to the neighborhood, it's not us to impose. So we have a recommendation before us, unless there's some other comments? Counselor McGlocklin, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Counselor Bean. The issue here for me is allegations, amateur lawyering, and a motion. A tree's been cut, this is a fact. Who did it, it's alleged. The person that's alleged to have cut it says they didn't cut it. The standard that we would expect, if we're gonna pursue legal action, has to be really high, really clear. We do not, we, we, as this council knows, thump frivolous lawsuits. We would not undertake one ourselves. Counselor Ando, at this moment is professing that a professional has suggested that trees were cut recently. Interim CAO McGrathu has provided information from Arboris, who say they're unable to ask for ten.
If, just a correction, they, they can undertake a study saying that. I wasn't prepared to spend money to get them to actually provide a written document. As I said in my report, is, there's a range, and I wasn't prepared to spend that money, knowing at this point in time, we don't know who cut those trees.
So, following this thing, I mean, that report, if it was taken, would show whatever it does, but it doesn't answer who did the tree cutting. And it comes down to the village enforcing legal action. And for me, without, as you put, the smoking gun, I think this issue is over for me.
Do we have any other, Counselor Ando?
I'd just like to clarify on page 15, some inaccurate information. Under conclusion, it says throughout this process, Counselor Ando has asked for Dr. Brown to undertake a survey. But the original survey was asked for when interim CAO McGrathu and Counselor McGlocklin met with Dr. Brown. They had originally asked for the survey, and that he would include all the trees, and that he would include who owned the property adjacent to it. So to put my name there, saying that, you know, I'm the one pursuing, it's true, I am the one pursuing, he should have provided the survey, which included all the trees, which included showing what the property lines were. But the original survey was requested, I believe Mr. McGrathu's request, that this would be a way to resolve this problem. So I believe it's a little bit inaccurate.
Well, with, you know, with respect, I think on page two of it, it says, will you follow through with your commitment to provide a land survey of all the trees? And that's what we initially asked for. What the discussion was, at one point, were only the trees on the east side. It was only, and that was the initial discussion, was only the trees on the east side.
Well, I wasn't in on that meeting, so I can't tell you what you guys asked for, but I believe.
I guess we'll have to discuss with counsel.
Any further discussion? Well, I, I think we should move this along and come to some sort of decision as to where we are at this moment. Where are we at? Do we, anyone choose to move, that we accept?
Minor modification on this, Counselor Bean, the report is dated September 30th, the third from the bottom line, and page 16 makes reference to October 1st, it should be September the 30th.
Okay.
That's the motion.
And the motion is as written.
Okay, do you have a second, or?
A second.
Counselor Ronzley, second. All those in favor? Hands.
If I may, ask for, are there any, is there any debate on this?
Oh, okay, any further debate, sorry. Okay, all those in favor? Against? Noted, Ronzley and McGlocklin in favor, and Ando against. By majority, we have it passed. So moving right along, if we can, we should call the mayor back. Thank you.
Thank you for presiding, Counselor Bean. And to continue with the agenda, to go to the Community Center Repair and Replace Project update on questions, page 325 of your package. Mr. McGrathu?
Madam Mayor, I won't go through this, I think the questions hopefully will be addressed. The only other item is the check off and sign off on three, we are still reviewing that. We have looked in this into more detail, and I'll, at the next council meeting, we'll have a, essentially a completion report forward, and I'll provide, along with Mr. Longson, a complete report on the, on the project.
Good. Thank you very much. And any anticipated date of completion?
Madam Mayor, we're hoping, we're targeting October 22nd.
And just for information for the community, so that the community's apprised of, that we'll be not moving in before, we'll work on that, but just, I know that you've been questioned from different community members on when to move in and that kind of thing, staff, so if we can just be sensitive to giving ourselves some girth there. Does that make sense? Before activities begin. So, yes, Counselor Ando?
I have a number of questions, so maybe if somebody wants to go first, but.
Okay, no, I don't have any, and we're, and I'll move us along. Yes, Counselor Ando?
So, the first question that I ask, and then I see the answer. The village office floor elevation, when Mr. Micklejohn was doing his drawings, showed the floor elevation of 107.92. I'm not sure of the units, but I would presume that it's probably meters above sea level, but I'm not sure. The grade to the east of the retaining wall is 114.6 in some locations, and 115.3 in others. Sorry, it is in feet. So the difference is approximately seven feet difference between the two grades. So I brought one of the drawings from Mr. Micklejohn, this is an A1 drawing from Millenia, and on it, the numbers are very small, but you can see the main floor elevation at 107.82. And then you can see the, the, 107.82 is here, and this is the village office floor elevation. And then the grade is 114.4. And these are in feet, so that would make a difference of approximately seven feet. That doesn't include, so that's to the top of the floor in the village office. The foundation would be another two to three feet below that. So if you have seven feet from the top of the floor to the grade of the soil outside of the retaining wall, plus you add three feet, you're looking at approximately 10 feet. So the comments here that it wasn't required because it was only five feet of backfill is inaccurate, and so that's where my concern is.
Yes, Counselor Bean?
Was the grades identified in that document, anticipated grades, or what we have today?
This is, this is existing offices and what's there today.
Oh, okay.
Because we hadn't planned to change the level of the floor in Phase Two or in the unified plan. The floor height remained the same. Well, sorry, unified plan we may have, but this is still Phase Two, when we were looking at Phase Two, or even in Phase One, the elevations are there. So actually, if you go through all of the records and you look, there was some back and forth in 172 when they did that evaluation of that wall, and they said that it didn't have rebar and remediation needed to be done, and the village never did the remediation. And at that time, the structural engineer at that time said that it may be okay if we only keep the fill to three to five feet. But in actuality, we raised it to 10 feet, and that's what makes it unsafe. And so, you know, he may have found that documentation, that three to five feet may be okay, and that's why he's recommending, or that it doesn't need any soil anchors because of the five feet. But this documentation by Millenia clearly shows that it's seven feet plus whatever underneath the main floor of the village offices, the foundation wall is, would be the total depth of that.
Mr. McGrathu's gonna report back to us on that. Okay, so thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Ando?
So, number three, I believe that Mr. McGrathu said that they're gonna check into, so I just wanted to be on record that I don't agree with the response to number three, and I believe it's the responsibility of the engineer on record. So, number six, it identifies the masonry wall to the north side of the community center as firewall, and the answer agrees that it is a firewall, providing a one-hour fire separation.
That's correct.
Okay. So if that's the case, why do we have a window in a firewall?
Where is the window?
The window in the library, to the north.
Oh, Counselor Bean?
It's not, not a window to the outside, not the window to another side. The firewall is there to protect the fire going from one part of the structure to another, but going out the window isn't a problem.
Okay, so, we, on the north side of the library, that concrete block wall, the cinder block wall, is hollow, and there's a, and I believe this is saying that it is a firewall. So are you allowed to have a window in a firewall?
Provided it's not a window between two enclosed portions of the building.
So it's okay that it can go to the office below?
Well, the section between the office below and that wall cannot have any breaks in it, but once you get above the roof level, then you could have a break in it, because the fire's not gonna go directly into another portion of the building.
The fire's gonna go up.
It's just like an apartment building, where you have a sliding door, where there's not an apartment next door, but otherwise you have a firewall if there was an apartment below. So thank you very much for that clarification, Counselor Bean. Any other questions? Counselor Ando?
So, the drawing on page 327 is a little bit inaccurate. The floor joints, or the ceiling joints, are running in the wrong direction. So I think that that changes the structure. I think that we should be accurate in all of the information that we're putting out into, into the village. Then also, thank you for providing the on-table invoice. So if I add up, no, I don't need to add up, if I take the work completed to date as being 201,942.76, and I divide it by the original budget and the revised budget, which is the same number, 473,253, then I would, that number equals 42.76%. So as of September the 15th, would it be accurate to say that the project was 42.8% complete?
I can't answer that directly, but it could be.
Well, given the information that Mr. Longson provided when I asked him how his 20, well, I can't remember, 21% complete was, and he said it was based on the number that has been billed back to the village and the amount of the total project, and that's how he came to the 21%. And if I use the same rational formula that he used, then would it be accurate or not?
I'm just, I don't want to have this kind of argumentativeness prevail. This is not a board game. This is a serious meeting. This is a serious meeting. Mr. Ando, pardon me?
Madam Mayor, Councilor Ando's mathematics are correct on this one?
No, no, I understand that they are. I'm just, no, I understand that they are. The point is, is that you must ask a question. Not a rhetorical question, but a question. And I'm going to ask Mr. Councilor Ando to please frame it as a question.
Okay. So, is it accurate to state that the project on September the 15th was 42.8 percent complete?
Madam Mayor, I'll work out those calculations, and I can respond to him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. If we can move along then, I'm going to put that to the front of our package. If we can move along to receiving reports. Thank you very much for the information that was provided by staff for the community center. And could I have Council please move receipt? Thank you, Councilor Ronsley and Councilor Bain. And call question on receipt of all the reports, all those in favor, carried unanimously. If we can then go through interim CAO McGrathu's report. It'll be verbal, yeah?
No, Madam Mayor. I think we've got enough.
Okay, you did. Okay. I knew that you didn't have one in the binder. I know that you've been reporting lots. Okay, so if I may, just, thank you, go to the mayor's report. And just say thank you to Councilor Ronsley and Mr. McGrathu for joining in meeting with Minister Steve Thompson at the UBCM and also with the minister, the Assistant Deputy Minister, pardon me, Kevin Richter. And just dealing with issues regarding public land transfer. And those, these are iterative processes that we continue to move the penny along the pavement, if you like, to get it across the finish line. But we need to know what finish line we want, so that's how it interweaves with the Land Use Master Plan and also the New Build Canada. And as a result of that, we've contacted, and thank you very much, Ms. Coontz, for contacting the MLA and MP's offices. And the MLA set up a meeting, the MP has instead set up a meeting as a result of that initiation with all of the municipalities throughout the corridor and the federal jurisdiction. And that's always a good thing in bringing in somebody to present on that issue. The Honorable Corley Oaks, who's the Minister of Community Support and Culture, announced, and thank you, Councilor Bain and Councilor Ronsley, for joining me last September in meeting with the minister to ask for and thank for when we received the community grant for the next four years. But we emphasized that it needed to be for, as an ongoing grant. And we thanked her for increasing it by 50 percent, but we also asked her that it should be an ongoing grant. So, at the UBCM, she announced that it's an ongoing grant. So, that's very good news for Lions Bay. So, anyway, so I want to thank all for being there with that. And you can see the report, it speaks for itself. And I just thank you to the library for its incredible flexibility in this time of transition. So, and thanks to staff for helping all of our different community groups there. So, Councilor Ronsley, you have a report in the binder, and then I'll go to council members who do not.
Just, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to point out that there was an action item on the October, for the October 7 minutes, on checking about chickens and keeping chickens. And so I did at the meeting of the NSSB, and they all have those. Anyway, I brought it to the North Shore Bach Area Network, and it was discussed. And there's a chicken bylaw that's been recently, within the past year, passed in Whistler. And they do have chickens there. And I was cautioned, seriously cautioned, that it's really, and Whistler's not at this meeting that I attend, that in order to have a bylaw and approve of chickens to be raised, it's very important to be able to enforce that bylaw and regular inspections and enforcement. And since this would extend our bylaw coverage beyond, I think at this point, my recommendation is, from the research that I have and the, what I've gleaned from others at this meeting, that we're not ready to have chickens in Lions Bay. And that's, that's that. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The meetings go on, and they'll be, they're reported as I attend them. So, anything I can do? Thank you.
Okay. There being nothing, Councilor Ando, anything to report?
I'd just like to report that the school decided not to do the split 1-2-3, that they've gone K1 only and then 2-3 split.
Ah, that's great. That's super. Councilor Bain?
Yeah, I just got a bit of an insert here, a bit of reading and stuff. I would just like to whizz through it quickly, hours are going on. It's just that in our meeting of April 15th of this year, we received correspondence from the city of Vancouver about changes to the BC ambulance service allocations. And I provided an email chain that's to Ms. Coontz to have inserted in here that has some of the details of our email that went back between myself and BC Emergency Health Services. At first, we never got anything back from them, and now they've provided three websites with information of this resource allocation plan. But I thought it might be interested, interesting for the community if they saw, well, they can look it up if they want there, but the one with all the colors and whatnot identifies the changes in criteria of responses. And I thought it would be interesting for the residents to have a look at it, because some things are of concern. And with being in the emergency services, there's a few of them that I'm kind of wondering For example, one of them has gone from what they're calling hot to cold. Hot is an emergency response, cold is a non-emergency. One of them would be animal bites, possible dangerous body area. That's basic life support. They've got, they used to have it hot in 11, but if I, now, they've got it down to a cold call. And there's another one farther on in there, where you're talking about serious hemorrhage. They've, they've downgraded it to a cold response with BCL, that's like basic life support. And it does cause me concern. But more importantly, there are some issues that came up in my conversations with paramedics and my own experience. And some of the concerns about underservicing the metro area, metro Vancouver area, it's, I've been told, there's been a significant increase in the population in the area, without a significant increase in resources of ambulances and crews. Consequently, West Van, for example, has only one ambulance. So, second calls in the same area are covered by Lions Bay or North Vancouver. Lions Bay fortunately has two vehicles, but I've noticed many times, there's no cars in station anymore, because they're busy covering. The system works well if there's a major disaster, they can pull in resources all over the places. But for the non-major disasters, where somebody is having a personal issue or something that's life-threatening, it's not quite as good. So, I would, I would suggest residents contact BC Emergency Health Services directly about their concerns or questions, if they want to look at the call criteria. And I think we might get more of a response if the population responds, because they're very slow getting back to our small town. And I know the bigger cities are dealing with it with limited success. So, I think it needs to be a bit of, if, if the general population feels like it's an issue, there needs to be a bit of a groundswell to push back on it.
If I might add here, I was at the mayor's committee meeting on Fri, on Thursday or Friday, and this is a huge issue that you're bringing forward. And I thank you for bringing it forward and the research that you've done, not only generally, but specifically to Lions Bay. And this is the findings throughout the region. It's, it's a major concern. It was also a significant concern and a budget, or a topic at the BC Mayor's Caucus. So, it's right through the province at this point as a major concern. You're very welcome. Thank you for bringing that forward. Councilor McLachlan?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. I'm just going to go on then to the fire report and ask if the fire chief, thank you for being here this evening, and I know it's, the time is late. And do you have a copy of this in front of you? Yeah. So, I'm just going to read out the recommendation, if I may, and if you can just have a seat, Fire Chief Oliver. It's very self-explanatory. I'm going to read out the recommendation that's before us. The Village of Lions Bay Council approved the additional capital purchases in 2014 of the Lions Bay Fire Department up to a total of $21,000, and the required funding be withdrawn from capital reserves. And now, I don't know if each of you have had a chance to read through this today. I see head nodding. It's very self-explanatory. Now, the actual amount is on the, financial impact is on the back. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion supporting this recommendation. Thank you, Councilor Ronsley and a seconder, Councilor Bain, and any discussion or questions on the motion. Seeing none, call question on the motion, all those in favor, carried unanimously. Thank you for preparing this, and thank you, Ms. Coontz. I imagine you worked together on this. You needed to be here to hear that good news.
Will we present my reports in the future?
Yeah. I'm going to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If I can just move us along here to resolutions and page 363 in your binder, we do need to move along. Stop me as I'm moving us along, but I'm assuming that everybody has read the material. So, the resolution to appoint a bylaw screening officer. And the resolution is that the Village of Lions Bay Council appoints Mandy Coontz as a screening officer for the purpose of assisting with the bylaw notice dispute screening process. Could I have somebody move and second? Thank you, Councilor Bain and a seconder, Councilor Ando. Yes. Any discussion? Call question on the motion, all those in favor, carried unanimously.
You missed the organics report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we're going to go back to that. Can I do one more resolution, and then we'll go back to that? Thank you very much. A resolution to undertake comprehensive parking review, and that is on page 367. I was wondering, when is Nikki's report coming up? It's a great report. So, this resolution is that the Village of Lions Bay Council authorizes village staff to undertake comprehensive review of the parking issues in the village. Do I have a mover, Councilor Ronsley and a seconder, Councilor Bain? And any discussion? Call question on the motion, all those in favor, carried unanimously. Now, before I go to Ms. Hogland, I'll just say, is there anything that the fire chief would like to, no, I didn't think so, I knew that you needed to get that passed. Ms. Hogland, would you like to join us, the manager of Public Works in Lions Bay? And if I can ask you to go to page 357 for Ms. Hogland's report on organics. And...
Let me speak to it.
Yeah, I'm going to let you speak to it. There's a, there's, the motion is right in before council. And, Ms. Hogland?
I'm simply here to ask, answering a question.
You should go through it.
With regard to my report, I'm sure you've got that.
Okay. We have read it, but Mr. McGrathu is, yeah, asking you, and, and just to say what the protocols are here, is that my apologies for not allowing Fire Chief Oliver, Andrew Oliver, to not speak. It wasn't that I was preventing you from speaking, I wanted to facilitate the resolution for you. But, Ms. Hogland?
Sure. So, I'm, do you want me to go into a bit further detail of why I brought that forward?
No, maybe just give us some broad highlights. First of all, I'd just like to give you the opportunity, give the opportunity to, take the opportunity, pardon me, to thank you, and maybe just go through the highlights for us.
Sure. So, a bit of background, the Village of Lions Bay is one of the 24 member municipalities of Metro Vancouver. And Metro Vancouver has an integrated solid waste and resource management plan that the member municipalities are expected to adhere to. As part of that plan, they have some solid waste diversion rates that, goals that they're working towards. And one of those goals is to divert, a diversion rate of 70% by 2015 and 80% by 2017. And they have a number of initiatives that they've implemented to try to help municipalities reach these goals that they have set out for the municipalities. And in the past, for example, they've done paper bans, so you know, elected paper into the land bill. And that is, that has worked to some degree for them. Their latest initiative is to implement an organic waste ban in garbage. It will be effective January 1st, 2015. Now, currently, in an effort to get people to divert more municipalities to get on board, they, they have a number of sort of carrots and sticks. The main stick is tipping fees. So, each municipality is responsible for getting rid of the garbage. And to get rid of garbage costs more than to get rid of green, green waste recyclables. And they keep increasing the tipping fee, the cost for municipalities to get rid of garbage, in an effort to have municipalities divert resources into ensuring that their residents also divert waste into the public streets. So, right now, the garbage tipping fee is $108 a ton. That is what municipalities get charged for garbage. For green waste or organic waste, it's $71. It's a considerable difference. There's a cost savings associated with diverting to green waste. When the ban comes into effect, there'll be a, a six-month grace period, if you will, with regard to surcharges. But Metro Vancouver is deadly serious about getting organics out of the waste stream. And so, if after six months, contamination continues to be a factor with Lions Bay or any other municipality, a 50% surcharge will be associated with the, on top of the increased tipping fee. Metro Vancouver also has been very upfront about the fact that they're going to continue to increase the garbage tipping fees. So, right now, it's $108 a ton. Their published rate is $151 a ton by 2017. They can change that. So, I think it's very timely that before this organics ban comes into effect, that we start engaging the community, we start letting them know that it's coming up. And we have some systems in place to ensure that our residents will have the ability to divert their waste in, you know, in a manner that they need to, in order for us to be able to save some money, especially when the surcharges will come through. I've gone through the existing contract with Smith-Wright. And that contract currently, because many municipalities, because Smith-Wright is involved in garbage collection, many municipalities that have already introduced putting organics in the green waste stream, that the cost would be the same to the municipality if we put food waste into the green waste or whether we don't. So, simply, simply put, the amount of green waste or organics that go into the garbage would get removed from that garbage stream, get put into the green waste stream, it would cost the municipality less to have the tipping fees associated with it. And we would also be not in competition with regard to having organics in the garbage stream. So, currently, our service for green waste runs by weekly from March to November, and we would have to see that extended. waste runs by weekly from March to November, and we would have to see that extended year round so that people could put their food waste into the green waste stream. And with that removal of the food waste from the garbage stream, I do believe it would be prudent to cut back the amount of times that we get Smith-Wright to come out of that garbage because that garbage will be collected as part of green waste as opposed to garbage stream. So it would be basically prudent to stop the, to have a corresponding decrease in garbage pickup requirements with the corresponding increase of green waste. And the city of North Vancouver has done that, basically, to buy weekly garbage pickup and weekly green waste recycling. So has the district of West Vancouver. And other municipalities have as well, but those are two that are quite close to us that have been, fear getting this challenge as well. So I've included a frequently asked question sheet that has been released by Metro Vancouver. It's been appended to this report, and an example of some of their educational posters, obviously somewhat targeted towards children because we all know that that worked really well for seat belts. I remember when I was a child that if we got into the car, which one of me didn't have seat belts, but the one that did, we got into that car and didn't buckle up, I thought we were all going to die.
Right.
And if we can educate, and that completely changed the way my parents did business.
Yeah.
The educational piece with the school will also be an important component, as well as an educational piece with the community itself.
Thank you very, very much for your report. So I have a couple of quick questions. I hope they're quick. One is, we need the 17 new public, you know, containers, and that will be later to this resolution. Great. The containers for residential, will, will Smith-Wright provide the containers, the organic containers?
I don't believe there would be any change to what Smith-Wright would be supplying. Generally, what has happened in the, well, I can only speak from the city of, if I haven't gone through it there. Residents simply affixed a sticker that said "Green Waste" to a normal 77-liter garbage container that they would have normally used for garbage, and then put their green waste in their garbage.
Wow, that's great.
So there was no added infrastructure associated.
That's great. So did the municipality provide your green waste sticker, or?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. So that's all in play. The Ruth Simons will be, I think, home and back in the community, but she's been away for a while. Yep. So you'll work with her on the communications plan, but this is a great Q and A. And so, any other questions for Counselor Bain?
Well, I've got a few things I'm kind of concerned about. Is when I hear green waste, I think yard creams, mainly because we usually put out enough that the fire chief can't get out of the driveway, but that's another matter. But they're usually open topped, so you're suggesting we should have a green waste with a lid on it, of course. And I noticed in the handout that, you know, as far as the green, the food products being in there and the odor on item 10, it just says bins can be cleaned on the spot. Well, it kind of brings up the mind to me because it also says that you can't have plastic bags in them, which was kind of handy for getting rid of the junk.
Correct.
So there's going to be many soiled cans, and if we clean them on the spot, the usual method would be rinsing them on site, which causes me concern because most people are going to rinse them on the driveway, and off all those aromas, it's going to be, aside from somewhat obnoxious, could have bear trap. Have they thought through that aspect, Oliver?
Through, yes. They, I think every municipality is dealing with it differently. I know that on my street, well, myself, for example, I wrap all my food waste in newspaper, which is also allowed in that same waste stream, and just chuck it in the day of garbage collection with my green waste. I do have a lid on it, but that's only to keep the probes out, not for raccoons or anything. Don't seem to get into it nearly as much. The city of North Vancouver does not actually require the food waste to be put into a plastic receptacle with a lid. It can be buried in your normal craft bags. The premise is, is that people don't leave it overnight, which they're not supposed to do anyway, and that the, I guess the thinking shift is really, it was always there over the curve, whether it was encased in a plastic bag in the garbage stream, or whether it's in a different location. It has, the fact that it's there hasn't changed. There, I believe there are four or five municipalities that do allow biodegradable bags. So it's like a plastic bag. It looks like a plastic bag. It feels like a plastic bag, but at least it does degrade. And we can definitely explore options and come back to council with regard to whether we allow biodegradable bags. It'll be also a question for Smith-Wright, because as the provider, they ultimately have to tip it. And so a lot of those questions would have to go to Smith-Wright because where they bring it to, well, some clear definitions as to what they can and cannot bring to tip. So currently, Smith-Wright, because they have such a large area in Lions Bay, it's not the new place of that, they currently take green waste to EnviroSmart Organics, which is located in Delta. So it's quite a distance from here.
If I can maybe suggest, because we're getting a little bit into committee work, is if I could suggest, I know that we've got a timing issue as well, so four minutes before we need to pass a motion to continue. But looking at this is that there will be a lot of, there will be a meeting regarding this, and it seems to me that you are bringing up some good points and may wish to sit on that committee, if you would be interested. I know that Counselor Ronsey is also sitting on that committee. Would that be, yeah, that would be great. So if I can, can I bring the motion forward with, if that, we're ready for that, because we do need to move along. So it's whereas the Village of Lions Bay is a member of Metro Vancouver and is committed to being a sustainable community, and whereas Metro Vancouver has announced a ban on all organics in the solid waste stream effective January 1st, 2015, therefore be it resolved, the Village of Lions Bay Council authorizes staff to proceed with implementing, the implementation of an organics collection service for the village effective January 1st, 2015, via increasing the existing green waste pickup contract with Smith-Wright to extend year round, and that council authorizes staff to increase the extended year round pickup of green waste to be collected effective January 1st, 2015, and that council authorizes staff to correspondingly decrease garbage pickup to by weekly effective January 15, January 1st, 2015, and that council authorizes staff to proceed with compiling and distributing information with regard to the mandatory organics collection service to all residents of the Village of Lions Bay. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Counselor Ronsey and a seconder, Counselor Bain. Thank you to all staff for the work on this. Excellent report. Any discuss, further discussion? Call question on the motion. All those in favor carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to the next motion, Ms. Hoggland, and that is with regard to CN, CN Rail Works, yeah. If I can, do a continuing motion. I think that we're going to have to continue for, yeah. We can go until 11:00. That we go, 60, it needs to be 60 minutes. Yeah. Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin, please, if we can maintain order, we're, we're needing to move along with all due respect. Counselor McLaughlin and a seconder, Counselor Bain, thank you for a 60-minute continuing motion. All those in favor of the continuing motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much. If we can then go to Ms. Hoggland, and if we can just maintain order, we've got so much on this agenda. Thank you. Of an important nature. Ms. Hoggland?
So, the fire chief's report ends definitely quite last minute. To provide information, council at CN Rail will replace the level crossing Lions Bay Avenue in a 10-hour window on the date of council's choosing, the week of November 24th, 2014. The big issue here is no vehicle access or progress will be available to residents, emergency services, or the marina during this window, as the work requires the complete closure of the rail crossing. So the reason for this urgent work that CN Rail has to do is that Transport Canada has strict guidelines for rail gauges for train safety, and there is a wide, what is known as a wide gauge defect at that crossing that they are concerned about, and it must be fixed urgently under Transport Canada guidelines. So it cannot be stressed enough that this required work by CN Rail to adhere to track standards is not something that we can prevent from happening. They have to go ahead and do this for the safety of the rail crossing. So as such, we can, however, choose a date for this work to take place. Staff recommend that the date chosen be November 25th. The reason this date was chosen was so as not to impact with the Public Works water sampling program, which takes place on a Monday, and which requires us to go back and forth through that access point. And we didn't want to have it on a Friday because, of course, that's regardless of this. So I will obviously liaise with B.C. Ambulance Service and Lions Bay Fire and Rescue to ensure that emergency services will be available on both sides of that level crossing and do what they can to minimize the impact, but unfortunately, it is a 10-hour window. There will be ability to traverse by foot, but not by foot.
Okay.
And just, sorry, just the financial implications. So condition five of certificate 6306 indicates that the costs of this maintenance are to be borne by the village. And when I wrote the report, I did not have a quotation insofar as what that would be for the 32-foot traffic panel and full deck rubber flange. Just prior to this meeting, I did receive an email that indicated the cost would be in the neighborhood of $24,000. But I have to get back to the people who quoted because it wasn't immediately apparent to me whether that included the rubber flange or not.
Yeah.
I think it does, but I would like to make sure. So we are looking at significant costs as well associated.
Thank you very much. I'm going to put the recommendation forward and ask council to move the recommendation. Counselor Ronsey?
This is time to ask a question.
Yeah, if we can move the recommendation first and then go to questions. Thank you, Counselor Bain, a seconder, and Counselor Ronsey.
My question is the safety, and I see the ambulance service and fire department are in the, in the mix there. No? Our fire chief seems a little bit surprised.
I wanted to talk to Nikki about this. We're going to have to put an engine down there. We're going to have to stop it. So the ambulance, they're going to have to put a, for you and down there, stop it. Just, just, if anything happened on us.
So could you, could you, I can hear you.
We're going to have to put an engine down there.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
And we're going to have to stop it. So there's a reasonable cost for the bridge to that. So obviously, if we're figuring the, the cost to do it up, are we going to be, we cannot prepare the cost of stopping? You know, so does the ambulance? We have to have an ambulance down there. Goes back to council fire's comments on, or the ambulance will go down there. We had this report many years ago when we had the tree storm. If you remember, the trees came down and we couldn't get down there. And we had to open up the road, even though we could have refused to let it up three, we still did it because you can't have 10 hours of no ambulance.
But you're the one. Thank you. You've been suspended my biggest word.
I just want to make comment just for Mr. McBride to be aware, and for yourself to be aware too, is that we actually worked in that area, AECOM, our contractor with AECOM, with regard to Lower Lions Bay. So it's just, it's interesting that we've done two updates in the not-too-distant future, one in 2011, and one which was like a wheelchair, you know, kind of ramp. Anyway, so I'm just, I don't dispute that we need to do the work, but it's just a real head-scratcher that it's, it's not an old pricing. Let's put it that way. So anyways, I'm going to ask if there's no further question. Counselor Ando?
So if your first quote is $14,000 plus $1,000, do you, are you getting other quotes? And do these, are they certified or recognized by CN to be able to do the work? Can you just briefly tell us?
Absolutely. CN, I believe, sources, they gave me the number of the entity that they get the crosses made.
So there's one choice. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor Ando. And I'm going to move to call question. All those in favor carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Hoggland. And please feel free to stay or go. I know it's late, and I would say the same to the fire chief, and the same to Mr. Subarna as well.
His report hasn't come yet.
Oh, your report hasn't come yet. Oh, gosh. Okay, let's move along. If we can go to 10A.
Oh, Madam Mary, before you go on to, you didn't pass resolution number two on the bylaw.
Oh, I'm sorry. 9B, thank you. 367, page 367.
You passed resolution one to appoint Ms. Koontz.
Yeah, thank you very much. 367. Anyways, could I have council move? And second, Counselor Bain and Counselor Ronsey? And any discussion? There being none, call question on the motion. All those in favor carried unanimously. If we can move along then to council procedures, bylaw number 476, first reading. Could I please ask council to move? Thank you, Counselor Bain and Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Counselor Ando?
I have another question. The first one would be on page 374.
Yes?
Can you advise, or someone advise on why the corporate office, so it's a third bullet, why the corporate officer determines based on the content, what should be in the council correspondence?
Based on the content should be included at the council correspondence. Yeah, could you? Thank you.
Some of those things are come in the mail addressed specifically to the C.A.O., and if it were something that the C.A.O. or his delegate thought of something prudent for council, he should take that with him to council as part of that side of the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And there's just a few things that, from that page, that I'll note, maybe capital C for councillor, and going down to near the bottom point of order, the next line says, "Ask the chair to rule," not rules, "on the procedural matter immediately." I think that those are all the little, they're just little peddylar changes. Yes, Counselor Ando?
In the public notice posting places, I was wondering why the mail room wasn't included. We traditionally posted our notices there.
We do, for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's not locking. We can put a lock on the glass case at the office. We can't lock that many, unless we post, there's no guarantee the next day up there. Case in point was a recent council agenda that evaporated after I put it up on Friday. And the other thing was, oh, if, when there's things on the, I can't reach. It's so high that I have trouble reaching. So we thought, if it's on the internet and it's at municipal hall, those were the most obvious places.
But I would say that most people go to the, pick up their mail, you know, at least maybe once a week, so they have a chance to see it. I would say that there's some people that very rarely come to the village office. So regardless of whether you can lock it or not, and if we do have to replace the odd one, I still think that we should provide it as a public notice place, especially with the long history of it being there. I really think that the public might, or the residents might disapprove of a change like that.
That's what the council, if they want that change.
Through, Madam Mary, we can certainly place it there. Through, Madam Mayor, we can certainly place it there but this is actually, you know, this will become a legislative requirement. So, I think there was a comment made a number of months ago that, you know, if we can put a different lockable bulletin board lower down, if we can find a location, then that would be okay. But barring that, then we can still post it but it would not be in the procedure bylaw as a requirement because there was a complaint that it disappeared.
So, if we could have a policy to also include the mailbox, would council be comforted by that? I certainly, yes, Councilor Ando?
As you first walk into the mailroom, there is a lockable case that's there that I know that the Price School and others have used. If they're not adamant about keeping that, maybe we could take control of that. I really think it's important for the community that, you know, it's, I think it's so important that it should be in our procedures bylaw. That's my thinking.
Madam Mayor, we can certainly do that as long as we have the ability to lock it and we have sole access to it.
Councilor Bain?
Well, to solve the problem, and this may sound a little bit funny, but you could put a board up where the existing one is on articulating arms so vertically challenge people, sorry, could pull it down, open it, put it in and lock it up and push it up.
And slip it up, yeah. So, if there's, what I hear is the proviso would be to, you know, in a secure area in the mailroom, is that, would that be comforting to council? I hear, I see head nodding around the table. Okay, I don't know where we are on that one. Do you have a page and location? I'm just staring at.
Page 373.
Okay.
And public notices, six lines from the bottom.
Okay, okay, so the wording change would be?
I think it would change.
Could you? Thank you so much. Okay, anything further? There being none, Councilor Ando?
I have a lot of reservations about going to meetings once a month. I think that we have plenty to discuss that warrants the two meetings. I think that it gives the residents an opportunity to address council. If we're decreasing the meetings to once a month, you know, currently there's 210 minutes to address council in a year, you drop it down to 105 minutes when they would physically be able to address council. So, I strongly believe that there should be at least two meetings a month. That would be my opinion.
Thank you. Perhaps some of the discussion that happens around the table is committee work and so we can get clear about what is, what goes to committee work and because the texture of some of the information, even tonight, is so important, it needs to go, to be chewed on further and that kind of thing.
I know the point has been made that we could have special meetings of council but, and the same agenda is followed and people would be able to address that. But I think having set dates where the residents know and the community knows where it can address council is a very valuable thing for the community to be able to voice their opinions and concerns within the community.
Mr. McBraddo?
Through, Madam Mayor, this is certainly, you know, obviously, you know, a decision of council. But being here for the past year, I, one thing I can say is that I think this, this community is not shy in expressing their opinions, nor are they hesitant in providing their opinions to council either verbally or in mail or in emails or over the phone or in person. What I am concerned about though is the amount of time it takes to prepare an agenda material. It is a very small office and I think that if the meetings are conducted, I think one meeting in a small place like the Village of Lions Bay per month, you can get all the work done. This is not a full-time job for counselors nor council. As you pointed out, Madam Mayor, there should be more use of committees. But what I would, I just look at the amount of time and the cost to prepare agendas, minutes. It typically takes two days a week and if we can reduce that, that's a lot more work that can be accomplished to get other policies and other work accomplished here.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call question on the motion. All those in favor? Or, I'm sorry, are there other?
He's got more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Page number three seventeen nine, number fifteen. It says that if the mayor and the mayor or the acting mayor, that council must choose a counselor to preside the council meeting. So, my question would be, who would be acting mayor or how does council decide who the acting mayor would be if, like for example, in August when you were away and then Councilor Bain went away?
Yeah.
And he nominated, for lack of a better word, Councilor McGlocklin to take over his presiding duties. This document doesn't address what would happen in that case and, you know, how, should be clearly defined that it should say maybe either the counselor before or the counselor after should take over those duties, I would think. It's probably very rare but it did happen, so that's why I raise that point.
And all it says in the charter is that the present member will select someone. So, if we can define it further than that, if council wishes, the community charter does not define it further than that.
So, Councilor Bain nominated Councilor McGlocklin. How would, and two of them are either, one's going out of the country, one was out of the country. How would we, would we have to call a council meeting in order to do that or can you, somebody explain this?
This particular provision at the bottom talks about.
The meeting.
A council meeting specifically. So, I think we're talking about two different things.
Okay.
We can certainly create a process for that and I think that's a valid point for the rare occasion that it does happen, but for the purposes of section fifteen in this bylaw, it's related specifically to meetings where new, the chair or the acting president.
Yes, that part, that part I understand that I brought it up in the wrong section but there was no other section where I could.
Right.
That's where it appeared to me, so that's why I brought that up. Okay, so somebody's going to look at that?
Madam Mayor, that is a good point. I don't think a counselor can designate somebody else as acting mayor, so that is something we have to address.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Ando?
So, page number three eighty-one, number twenty. If there's no quorum present within fifteen minutes of the scheduled council meeting, the corporate officer must, so what happens if the corporate officer doesn't come to the, to a council meeting? Does the council meeting not go ahead? It only, it deals with council members, it doesn't ever talk about the corporate officer. Are we allowed to proceed without the corporate officer?
We can rewrite that, that provision is existing by law, so yes, like a certain conversation that we had.
Right, because it seemed that there was something that was missing from here that I didn't understand what would happen if the corporate officer wasn't here.
Through you, Madam Mayor, what I'm assuming you're asking is that if council called a special meeting without staff?
Well, so say we had this meeting tonight and you had a family emergency, God forbid, don't.
Right.
And you had to go back to Squamish, would we have to cancel this meeting?
Only if there's no.
No.
Only if there's no.
Only if there's no quorum.
That's what the version is that.
No quorum. So, what, excuse me, I think what you're, you're asking is that whether it's the corporate officer or, I'm not sure under the definition, or the designate. So, I'd have to check the definition section, whether it be the corporate officer or designate. So, for example, if I'm the corporate officer or Mandy's a corporate officer and she has a designate, then maybe we should, you know, as long as there's somebody there.
Right.
So, I could, we can follow that up. That's a good question.
Or designate.
So, it should be, or designate.
It does say, well, corporate officer does and his or her delegate.
Yeah, okay.
So, have we, has council approved a delegate for you?
Yes.
Currently, right now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's fine, thank you. So, this, so now I'm on three eighty-two, twenty-two-two, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-two-two.
Yeah.
Our office is closed on Wednesday. I know that one time you had looked at maybe changing the day that we're closed but to have, you know, for submissions to come in and the closing date to be the Wednesday at four o'clock and the office being closed on Wednesday, we had discussed this in length previously when we were, when we were talking about this topic. I don't know how you, you think that there's any inconsistencies in accessibility if someone wanted to physically submit documentation but the office wasn't open.
What I have done in the past and we have come in on Thursday morning and bound hand delivered documents to the mail slot, and I deem those as received on Wednesday. We can't determine the time, so I.
Well, I have no problem with that and I think that that would be acceptable but I think that the residents and the community should know that and I don't know whether we need to, whether anything needs to be adjusted here or not.
The majority of our correspondence is received by email, a vast majority of our correspondence is received by email and of course there's a date and time stamp on all of that.
Right.
If I may, just, I haven't chatted, what would it help, or would it be beneficial if we said, in conclusion, council agenda must be by 10:00 AM on the Thursday? Could that work?
That would be fine.
Oh, that would work.
So, you know, it's the next morning anyways, so ten, by 10:00 AM Thursday.
That would be much better.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
Would that work, Mandy?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. And next?
Page three eighty-four, abstention from voting and tie votes.
Sorry, where are you?
Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four. Does this preclude the ability to have your vote recorded or you still able to ask to have your vote recorded? Thank you. Public participation in that section, it doesn't say or address how council could have more public participation by a majority vote. I believe that before we were able to, at least if I read this correctly, were able to have more people speak if council so chose.
That should be there. Where are votes are you right now?
I'm in public participation, number twenty-seven.
Huh.
All it says in the existing bylaw, under section nineteen-one, council shall determine public participation period or until speakers concluded whichever conference that we will make a meeting. Point two, members of the public should ask their questions to remember trying to count from eight minutes to ten and the number of counts. So, there's nothing about council resolving.
Right, but, okay, so maybe it's by practice that we've done that, but if we're revising this document, then if that's council's will and that's what we want, then we should.
I'd suggest that we do it in a friendly manner because it becomes apparent, but we, you look at the meeting tonight, for example, it's, we've got at least an hour's work, I think possibly, to do depending on how quickly we move through this next piece. Maybe it's hopefully thirty-five minutes and we can only go till eleven. So, I just, I'm concerned that that be, that not be used in a way that people then say that's an expectation that they would have versus council having a policy that they can, that they can, I think that is, it is someplace else in the document. Call reading it someplace else in the document where council can choose to.
Well, it's always at council's discretion with a majority of the vote to be able to extend it. Can we not include that in writing?
You can agree with the competition.
Yeah, that makes sense here, but it would be at council's discretion, but honestly, pardon me?
So, council can agree to have more public participation by a majority vote.
By a majority vote. By a majority vote of members present, yeah. It is always a, anything else, Councilor Ando?
So, reading, so now I'm on page three ninety-two.
Yeah.
And it says, "A proposed bylaw may be debated and amended at any time during the first three readings." So, I always thought that we couldn't, couldn't debate before third reading or we couldn't change something in third reading.
You can debate it.
Okay, debate it.
The third, yes.
So, but it says, "A proposed bylaw may be debated and amended at any time during the first three readings."
That's right. And then if third reading has occurred.
That's kind of change what's existing in the.
I know, so, but we've been, haven't we been practically following that we weren't allowed to amend once it got to third reading? So, were we incorrect in not amending things in third reading?
Not amended after third, because so.
No, after third.
Before the third reading is, the motion for the third reading is actually carried.
So, we can't amend something before third?
You can't debate until you've moved and seconded but after the debate you can choose not to do the third reading.
It's why we would rescind third reading, so I know this is like a mathematical game. So, we've got past first reading, past second reading, now past third reading, so we've debated, amended all those three. Now we want to make an amendment, we have to rescind third reading, right, to then go through it again, so we've done that, we've rescinded third reading, gone through it again and then passed third reading so that we could then go on to final reading. So, that's probably what you're thinking of when we rescind that third reading in order to deal with third reading again.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's what we've done.
It's what we've done recent, yeah, okay, no problem.
My understanding could be wrong.
No change.
So, my, kind of changes what I wanted to say then, but, because my understanding was that we weren't able to amend something in third reading, so if we're able to do that, then that's fine because I, then I would have recommended that, you know, in the past we've done and this council has tried to undertake that we'd only do first and second reading and then third reading in the next meeting and then adoption in the meeting thereafter. But if you're not able to amend in the third reading, then I would recommend only going with the first reading.
Can I just add a plain offside, sorry, I'm running into it. I think perhaps what's not being resonated is that until that motion is carried, third reading isn't passed, so the debate can still occur because third reading hasn't passed.
Right, but, but you're, I'm wondering whether or not you could amend a third reading, amend something within a.
Not after it's, just to be clear, not after it has been passed without rescinding it.
Prior to that weekend and changes to.
Yeah, okay. And anything else? And we just need to really move quickly along here.
So, these resolutions.
What page are you on?
Now I'm on three ninety-three.
Okay.
And so, we've taken out number, former number thirty-eight and I think that resolutions should be in the council package for the most part. The reason is, is that it allows the public to see what we're going to talk about and if it's not in the council package, then resolutions that could be a very, that could be of importance to the community could be passed without any public input or at least the opportunity to have public input. So, that's why I believe that most, if not. So that's why I believe that most, if not all, resolutions should be on the agenda and in the agenda package for the residents to see, and, and we should do, make every effort to try not to do on-table resolutions, for the most part. That way our residents can remain informed and can't say after the fact that they didn't know that that was going to be discussed at such a council meeting.
I would, I would say that we want that to be a normal practice. At the same time, Councillor Ando, yourself have brought resolutions on table, and, and so, so that we don't, we need to have a practice, I believe, where all resolutions are optimally in the package, as you say. But the situation tonight, for example, with the CN one, it literally came upon us, and we need to, it's a safety issue, we need to act. So we need to have a procedural bylaw that's enabling. Now, I didn't have anything to do with removing that, but I'm just wanting to say that, I don't know, Ms. Cook, do you have something? Brad, I'm just going to ask, on that, it's page three twenty-three, three ninety-three, pardon me, on number thirty-eight.
Including resolutions.
Yeah.
From my experience, we're trying to make sure they are always.
Yes, exactly.
If I'm, you know, doing more from that end to.
So what's the harm in keeping this, this section in? I, I thought that the old system, or that the existing wording and the way that resolutions are presented to council was very fair and provided a lot of safeguards, openness and transparency, and I thought it was, was wonderful. I, I think on-table resolutions should require a consensus of council, that, not a consensus, but.
Yeah, but, yeah.
It's a majority of council.
Yeah, majority of council.
It used to be.
Yeah, it, it, it would be fine if for, to be unanimously agree. Certainly that, I don't know what other council members feel, but it could be left in. It's what our, our will is, it leaves us the opportunity to agree, to bring it forward.
I think on this, Madam Mayor, the issue is desired state versus practical state.
Yeah.
I mean, tonight being a good example, we've done three.
Yeah, exactly, where we have all agreed to bring them on table, because they've been on our.
I mean, I think, as I continue, whether it's this council or continuum, it's a matter of serious regimen to try and do it. So, I mean, when our staff are bringing forward, as was the majority of tonight, fine, well, they're, they may not have the luxury of two weeks, it's in their face, so fine, but certainly you would think for the council members, sure, if something happening very close to the deadlines, it should be in the packages.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So I think it's, it's a personal regimen that you have to follow.
Any, any comments on that?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Six of one, I guess.
It's pretty common, it's a, it's a pretty common clause to have in.
I don't think it hurts to leave.
No.
I don't think it hurts to leave it in either. So if we could just leave that in, that would be great. Anything else, Councillor Ando, and then I just really, I'm not wanting to truncate the process, but trying to figure out whether we should be setting aside this, yeah.
I understand the essence of time, so I really think that we should table this.
And that's what I'm wondering.
And, and see the changes, and then.
And then, yeah. Go through it again. I think that's a good idea, if we could.
If I may, Madam Mayor, if you have specific questions on it, if you can submit it to, to us, then we can try to, you know, address those beforehand, the next meeting.
I think that would be very valuable.
If anybody has, and then, because, you know, that's a good question about the resolutions.
Yeah, it is, I think that's a great question.
Then we could, you know, try to bring them.
Is that, is that fair enough? Thank you very much, and thanks for all that input. If we can move along then to.
You need to table, you have.
Oh, pardon me, I have a tabling motion, can I have a seconder? Thank you, moved by Councillor Ando, tabled, pardon me, seconded by councillor Bain. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. If we can go on to fees and charges amendment by law number four eight oh, third reading, page four oh one, could I have council move? Thank you, and second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. If we can have animal control and licensing amendment by law number four eight one, adoption, could I have council move? And second, councillor Ando and councillor Bain, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. If we can move to secondary suites amendment by law, third reading, could I have council move? Thank you, councillor Rosley, and second, councillor McGlocklin. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously.
That, Mayor, that takes action, and so on October's, for October seventh, I'd like to suggest that staff prepare an information bulletin on the suites amendment by law changes, please.
Excellent, thank you very much, to staff. Correspondents, could I have council please move receipt of correspondence? Thank you, councillor Bain, and second, seconder? Councillor Rosley, thank you, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Anything that you wish to pull out for correspondence?
I had some things, but owing to the time.
Okay, owing to the time, can we leave that with staff? And, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And new business, charitable donations and gifts to the village, page four eighty-three of the package. Could I have council please move and second? Recommendation, charitable donations and gifts, it's the policy, so maybe moving to adopt the policy. I'm imagining everybody has a chance to review it. Thank you, councillor McGlocklin, and a seconder? Councillor Bain, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Subarna, for reviewing it and your time on that with Ms. Cook, and if you can pass along our thanks there. The recommendation, when moving on to the recommendation, the village of Lions Bay Council appeals the freedom of information policy nineteen ninety-four, and the rationale is that it's redundant, because we're guided by the provincial. Could I have council please move? Thank you, councillor Rosley, and second, councillor Bain, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. If we can, let's see, we're at two eighty-nine, if we can move along to the Waste Reduction Week.
C.
Pardon me?
C.
C.
On page forty-one.
The municipal grant program, pardon me, if we can, sorry, I was already there, and then I, this is really nicely done, thank you very much for all this work, really very good. The recommendation that council receives this report for information authorizes staff to begin the 2015 municipal grant application process, could I have council please move? Thank you, councillor Rosley and councillor Ando. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Great work, thank you very much, Mr. Subarna. Okay, and then the next one is four ninety-seven, the Waste Reduction Week, and that is to make the October twentieth to twenty-sixth Waste Reduction Week in Canada, and I suppose we'd let people know by e-post that that was a goal that we had. So could I ask council to please move that the village of Lions Bay supports Waste Reduction Week in Canada 2014 for the week of October twentieth to twenty-sixth? Could I have a mover? Councillor McGlocklin and councillor Ando, any discussion? Call question on the, oh, call question on the motion, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. And then the twelve E, the RCMP Squamish Regimental Ball, and this is whether or not, and, and it was, the inspector came and he said, oh, I have the ticket. I said, actually, we'll just find out whether there's a desire of, on council's part, to send the mayor or not, or send anybody or not. So I'll just say councillor McGlocklin.
A mayor to go? Oh, this is a big deal with them. I talked to Constable Cross, and it is a big deal.
It's, it is, I know. It was the first thing that he talked to me about when I came down.
I should say that at LMG, you know, we were, you know, I was there when he said, you know, you're coming to the ball, aren't you, you know?
Yes.
I, I think the mayor must be accompanied at that ball, nobody goes to a ball.
Nobody, I've been to several of these regimental military balls and.
Mayor and her appointment, and appointed spouse, or something like that.
Okay, I'll have you put that forward. Is there any further wording that is needed for that?
Well, Madam Mayor, that council cover the costs of the mayor covering, attending the Squamish RCMP Regimental Ball, and whether you want to include the spouse, it's up to council.
I'd put that resolution forward, plus spouse.
I, I agree.
Any discussion? Call question on the motion, all those in favor? You're abstaining, okay.
Nobody goes to a ball themselves.
Okay, I'm going to then move us to public questions and comments, and just hope that in the interest of time, we've got a huge further agenda. Mr. Stone?
Mrs. Public. Public?
Yes.
Thank you.
Three minutes maximum.
Thank you, Mr. Bain. First of all, quickly, I want to point out to members of council, and I'm very surprised, Mrs. Brown, that we've been now fifteen years as mayor.
Yeah.
And we have a procedure bylaw.
Yes.
It states, council may continue a council meeting from ten p.m. to ten thirty p.m., only by an affirmative vote of two-thirds of council members present. Thirty minutes, not an hour. I have a question for Mrs. Brown.
We were, we were, I, we, just a second, I just want to, I want to just call you to order for a moment, Mr. Stone. With all due respect, with all due respect, Mr. Stone, staff has guided us on this, and it says, from ten thirty to another specified time, only by unanimous vote of all councillors. And we had a unanimous vote, and I, I really, we have so much work to do, you've got a few minutes left, a couple of minutes left, or a minute and a half left, could you please continue?
Thank you, Mrs. Brown, but I'm surprised that you're not aware that.
No, it is right in, you know, I, I just must say, and don't, please don't stop the clock, no, because this is, this is something that I need for the record, it to say that in our council procedures bylaw, twenty twelve by law number four five three thirty-two one B, so that all attending are clear, from ten thirty p.m. to another specified time, whether it's eleven o'clock or one o'clock in the morning, only by unanimous vote of all council members, councillors.
Okay, I'd like to call your attention to mayor's report.
Thank you.
Of June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, that's page three thirty, no, all right, in the book. It says, review of proposed changes and creation of a community space in the south end of the library area, and that's your discussion with Tony Cox, councillor and Mayor Brown. I would like some clarification or information about creation of community space in the south end of the library area. When I asked earlier about the seven hundred twenty-six, nobody knew anything, but here, you obviously know something, and you didn't answer the question, so I would like some clarification, please.
The former, sure, the former kitchen that was at the south end of the library has been removed, and it's been made into an overall room, so there isn't a hallway and a kitchen there, it wasn't a kitchen, it was a series of cupboards, but the, the cupboards have been removed, and the wall has been removed, and it's been made into a room.
How much space is that, square foot?
I don't know what.
Is it seven hundred twenty-six?
Yeah.
No, the, the total number of that would not be seven hundred.
Does anybody know?
Time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone.
Does anybody know?
I'm going to.
Space might be twenty-five.
That's two hundred square feet.
Yeah.
That's it? Is that the only space that we've?
Time, man.
I, I just, I'm so sorry, Mr. Stone, I've got to respect it.
It's a yes and no answer.
That, that is the space that we've, we've.
Okay, so it's a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can move us along then to an in-camera resolution, be it resolved that the village of Lions Bay Council does close the October seventh, twenty fourteen, regular council meeting to the public on the basis of matters to be considered under the following sections of the community charter ninety-one. Part of a council meeting may be closed to the public if the subject matter being considered relates to or is one or more of the following: labor relations or other employee relations, litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Could I have council please move and second? Thank you, councillor Rosley, and seconder councillor McGlocklin, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors, the public portion is adjourned, or is going in, we're going into close, so could you please excuse? Thank you so much, dear.
Hold a call.
Yeah. Pardon me?
I know she's all.
Eleven, you can't.
Going up.
Yeah, can't speak.